This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, August 20th. Please stand for our invocation led by Dr. Mac Morris, Pastor Woodbridge Baptist Church.
I had asked for a point of personal privilege for just a moment. I promise you it won't take long, even though I am a preacher, I will be brief. Fifty-three years ago, my wife and I drove across Spanish Fort Hill to look at a school. We stopped there and my wife said, "Well, we'll take a look, but we'll be going back home after a while." Little did we know that fifty-two years later, we would still be in Mobile, Alabama. All of us remember first things. I remember first grade, I remember my first job, I remember my first car, I remember my first girlfriend. Some of us experience last things. This coming Sunday, I will retire after fifty-one years as a pastor. I want to say thank you to the city of Mobile. Mobile has become home for us. We planted our lives here, and we have immensely enjoyed our time in this grand city. We love Mobile. Last things, first things. When the first Congress met on September the 5th, 1774, they met in secret. That Congress opened in prayer and was led by a Philadelphia pastor named Jacob Douche. It was the first prayer, and I've chosen that to be my last prayer in this official capacity here. So would you join me as I read Pastor Douche's prayer? "O Lord, our heavenly Father, high and mighty King of kings and Lord of lords, who from your throne behold all the dwellers on earth and reign with power supreme and uncontrolled over all the kingdoms, empires, and governments. Look down in mercy, we pray, on these our American states, who have fled to you from the rod of the oppressor and have thrown themselves on your gracious protection, desiring to be henceforth dependent on you. To you have we appealed for the righteousness of our cause. To you do we now look up for that countenance and support which you alone can give. Take, therefore, heavenly Father, under your nurturing care. Give these members wisdom and counsel, valor in the field. Defeat the malicious designs of the adversaries, convince them of the unrighteousness of their cause, purposes of their own unerring justice. Constrain them to drop the weapons of war from their unnerved hands in the day of battle." We pray that you would be present, oh God of wisdom, and direct the councils of this honorable assembly, enabling them to settle things on the best and surest foundation, that the scene of blood may be speedily closed, that order, harmony, and peace may be restored, that truth and justice, faith and piety prevail and nourish and flourish among the people. Preserve the health of their bodies and the vigor of their minds. Shower them and the millions they represent such temporal blessings as you see expedient." All this we ask in the name of Jesus, your Son and our Savior. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Vice President Manzi.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Small.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Daze.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory. Statement of rules.
Good morning.
Good morning.
That was kind of weak. Good morning. The rules of this particular meeting are as follows. We first ask that you turn off or silence all electronic devices as you enter into the auditorium. Any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution, ordinance, appeal, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, we ask that each speaker clearly state for the record both your name and your address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the city clerk's office on the Thursday preceding the Tuesday in which you'd like to speak by 2:00 P.M. The subject that you'd want to speak from must be pertinent to City of Mobile business. Anyone who hadn't followed those directives won't be allowed to speak. Each speaker is granted five minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of four minutes that indicates sixty seconds for you to summarize. The second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing the council, we ask that there be no personal address to any individual council member. That all statements be made to myself, who serves as chairperson, and any council person who wishes to respond will be given that opportunity. To maintain the quorum, we ask that there be no public outcry or undue applause during the course of this council meeting. Those are our rules, and we're certainly glad and appreciate your interest in your municipal government. Mayor City Clerk.
Communications from the mayor.
Well, good mornings. Good to see everybody this morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for being here. First, I'd like to call on Chief Batiste, who will recognize our Officer of the Month. So if the officer and chief could go to the podium, please.
To the mayor and council, it gives me pleasure to stand here before you this morning to recognize Officer Terry Sexton. Officer Terry Sexton has rendered a service to the City of Mobile which deserves special recognition, and I'll be brief with the comments. It says, "In total last month, Officer Sexton answered sixty-eight calls for service, backing forty-nine calls, twenty-nine felony arrests, eighteen misdemeanor arrests, and wrote eight traffic citations during the month of July." But more importantly, Officer Sexton came over to the City of Mobile approximately two years ago from the Mobile Fire Department. I've known Officer Sexton probably all of his law enforcement career because I worked with him as a deputy sheriff when I was with the Mobile County Sheriff's Office. And it's not every day you hire a guy that has the ability to walk in as a new officer but can serve as a mentor to young officers out there in the field. And Officer Sexton does that out in the 4th Precinct. He not only does, handles the responsibility of his job as a patrol officer in the 4th Precinct, but he mentors other officers in the 4th Precincts and makes sure that they're learning those skills and tasks that they need to know to be good law enforcement officers for the City of Mobile. So it gives me great pleasure to recognize him as Officer of the Month and pray that he continues to work hard and do the things that he's done to get him to this point today.
Officer, before you sit down, I think Director Barber wanted to make a comment, and I did too.
You know, to the city, to the city council, I just wanted to point out an observation is that Officer Sexton, I guess being the Public Safety Director, I have the luxury of having access to the fire department, and I noticed his love of law enforcement, even though he was a firefighter in his previous experience as a sheriff's deputy. For four years, I've been trying to get this young man to come over to the, back to the law enforcement side, and he finally did take me up on that offer, what, about two years ago? And, but what I wanted to point out is on that uniform, he wears a ribbon that is really unique of any uniform ribbon that you'll ever see, but it is the Medal of Valor, which is rarely given to officers, and it is only given when there's conspicuous courage and gallantry at grave personal risk to his own personal life. And I just want to thank you for your service and thank you to see you wearing that uniform.
Thank you, sir. Proud of being in it.
Well, during my opportunity to visit with the officer and his wife Tabitha, Tabitha, you'll raise your hand. As a matter of fact, if you'll stand up.
Thank you.
I think she deserves a big round of applause. You know, her comment was, I said, "When he went from being a firefighter to a policeman, did you just cringe?" You know, and she said, "Nope, that was his decision, and I will support him in no matter what he does," which is so gratifying for a husband and a wife to, a wife to support a husband in that way. So I'm just tremendously grateful for what he's done. But one of the other comments that he made to me was, he said, "Mayor, in all of my career, I have never been welcomed into any organization like I was welcomed into the Mobile Police Department." He said, "It's just an amazing experience, and I'm just honored to be there and tremendously grateful for the outreach that all the other officers had in reaching out to me." So thank you, officer, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I would ask Curtis Graves and Officer Katina Randolph to please come to the podium. And Curtis will make a few remarks about Ms., about Katina, and so we'll, then I will follow up with some comments.
First of all, it's always an honor to stand before you guys. Really appreciate this opportunity, but even more so because I get to recognize an awesome person in my office, and that's Ms. Katina Randolph. Mayor is prepared to give her accommodation for some outstanding work that she's done in our community. It is truly an honor to not just work with her, but to also work with my team of staff that sits back behind me here. They will stand for just a second. You know, there's an old adage that says that an ounce of prevention is worth a pound in cure. Family Intervention Team does just that. It's hard to measure what they do in terms of numbers, but when we can say that we're doing things in our community that, that help to improve families and outcomes in families, we may have just turned off a spigot to something that could have been much worse for that community and for that family. So the work that she does will be explained briefly by the mayor, but nonetheless, the work that's done by the team in its entirety is extremely important. It's important that, that we understand that there is two parts of law enforcement. There's the enforcement, and there's the prevention and intervention. I'm tasked with making sure that the prevention and intervention occurs for the Mobile Police Department. We hope in the future that we can measure these numbers in some way, but in the meantime, we will continue to do what we do, and that is to make sure that we're doing our part in our community to make it the safest community in America. Thank you.
So what I would like to do, upon reading this, the letter that I received and realizing the gravity of it and the, just the inflection that you could tell from the writer of the letter, I said, "You know, we've got to do something really special here." Now, I think as elected officials, we all receive very nice letters commending a lot of our employees, but this one to me was just extra special. And it was written by a father who was, had been at a very, very, very low point in his life. And I'm going to not necessarily read all of it, and I'm going to try to redact the names, so if you'll just bear with me for a moment. "My name is Blank. I have lived in Mobile County for forty-six years and will not live anywhere else in this fine country. I work at Blank as a Blank," sorry about that, that's most of the blanks. "As a father, you know the difficulties with raising teenagers. My son has been very challenging, especially after my divorce two years ago. I had to call on the 2nd Precinct multiple times to get some help when my then very angry son. Officer Walter Air gave me a phone number that would change everything. He told me to call the Family Intervention Program and to get in touch with Officer Katina Randolph. I had no idea how she would make such an impact on my son. I called Mrs. Randolph, discussed my situation, and we connected immediately. She met me at his high school, and we talked to him, and that is where it started. In January of 2019, I received the, my son received the Individualized Service Plan with the guidance of Mrs. Randolph. I want you to know that this saved my son from going down a path of failure. He had had very poor grades back then, but he finished the last quarter with a 3.64 GPA. This program, along with Mrs. Randolph's compassion, commitment, reliability, honesty, and relentless work ethic, is truly an asset to this community. She has a way to connect with difficult children, which I consider a gift from God. She was able to get down to his level and let him understand that he is not alone and that he can turn things around. She took him on a field trip to the Metro Jail during his spring break, and that is where he was able to put things into perspective. He realized where he could end up if he did not change the course of his life. I owe this to Mrs. Randolph for making such a difference in his life. I cannot thank her enough. I also want to thank the 2nd Precinct for answering every call and having officers take the time to assess the situation and always have a positive conversation with me during those very difficult times." I'll stop right there, but some of the comments, you know, there's so many unsung heroes that work in our fire department, our police department, in our Public Works Department, in our Parks and Rec Department. And we never know when one of our employees is connecting with somebody in a way that is so special that maybe they were the person to be able to make a difference in a young person's life. I wish we could help them all, but I know that from her role model of what she has done and what she is doing, we will continue to make a difference. In my conversation with Mrs. Randolph earlier, she said, "The turning point really was when I walked him through Metro Jail and he realized that this is not where he wanted to be." So yes, we have some tools available to us, and I hope that we will continue to use all of them to help to continue to keep our young people, to enable them to make good choices in life. So congratulations, and thank you very much, Ms. Randolph. And that concludes my remarks. Mr. Vice President?
Mr. Vice, Mr. Vice President? Mr. Small?
Yeah, I would like to congratulate Mr. Curtis Graves and also Ms. Randolph for the job well done, and also, you know, the staff. I know that we have worked together throughout the year of last year, my company and the Mobile Police Department with the different use in the school system. And I'm all about prevention intervention, intervene in, especially with our youth. But speaking of prevention, Mr. Mayor, I'm not too sure if you are able to answer this question or not, or just go down to the Public Safety Director or the Chief of Police, but there has been rumors among this council this morning about pulling back the police at Last Stadium through, during the football games. He was trying to figure out, is that information, that just rumor gospel, or is that in the truth to that information?
There is no intent to pull back security. Last Stadium hires their own law enforcement security to work security. We are considering pulling back some of the traffic detail that we have at some of the high school games because the traffic flow in that area is not, is not that congested during high school ball games, that we need to have the number of personnel on overtime working traffic details. So we are looking at that plan and maybe pull back some of those personnel dealing with traffic, but security will be at Last Stadium as always.
Okay, so there will still be some type of policemen on the streets to do some traffic, correct?
Of course. We're looking at reducing the number of personnel. Again, we don't need the, the large numbers that we've had historically, and again, we're looking at ways how we can trim some overtime expenses from our budget as, as we look at that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
No, no problem.
That's good to hear.
Now, I was going to talk about something, are you going, okay. I would like to also congratulate Mr. Curtis Graves and his team for outstanding job that you all have done. I received a letter, I think it was last week, from Mr. Clarence Allen, the CEO of the National League of Cities. And he told me that they were taking up the issue of gun violence at the national level, and that they were gathering input from key cities in the nation. He asked me if I could provide him the strategies that the City of Mobile is using to combat gun violence. So I wrote the mayor, and the second time I wrote him about this issue, and I asked him if he would review all shooting incidents in the City of Mobile over the past five And in reviewing that information, find out what all shooters had in common, and then create a prototype that can be mailed to the council members that we can share with the people in our district, and they'll know what to look for, who to look for. And that also would help you, Mr. Graves, if we, if the, if the citizens inside these communities gave us that valuable information, that would be something for you to look at. And I have not received a reply, Mr. Mayor, I hope that you reply to that. It would mean a lot to me because I can send that information to the residents, or I would send it to every resident in District One. If you know somebody fitting, fit this description, that you believe is dangerous to fit this, we want to know who it is. And then we, if we don't do that, you know what we are doing? We are sitting up here waiting on them to kill somebody, and then we're going to act. What if we could act before they did anything? What if we could snatch that gun out of our hand before they could fire it off? If we always do what we always did, we will always get what we always got. If we keep on doing the same thing, the results is going to be the same. We've got to do something different. We got to let the people, you know what, community policing? Turn the community loose and let them help us. There is not a criminal out there that's not known by somebody in the community. All of them, they know all of them, and we have not reached out to them to ask them to tell us who it is. I want that opportunity, and I'm waiting on my reply, reply from the mayor so I can make my move in District One.
Vice President?
Thank you. Mr. Richardson? I'm going to ask-
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Public Safety Director?
Yeah, just to follow up on Councilman Richardson's request, I think it's a good time for us to have another public safety meeting. We did have one in which we shared demographic data of shooters as well as victims. You asked for some additional information, which we did not normally collect, such as the level of education of these individuals. I do know that the police department has made an effort since then to try to capture some of that data, but I think the Office of Strategic Initiatives, which you'll find have been very active in this area, which is Curtis Graves, their entire mission is to prevent these guns or these triggers from ever being pulled in the first place. We've been at Montgomery requiring hospitals to report gunshot or puncture wounds to us. That bill successfully passed. There, the project Thrive that you've heard us talk about is well underway, and we'd be glad to have his group provide you with that information as whenever you're ready.
I'm ready, I'm ready now. And, 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 Mr. Director, when I sent you that, I gave some examples. I wasn't telling you that that's what you had to do. I said, when we, when I said, "Find out what they have in common," I said, "For example, did they drop out of high school? Did they have a job?" That was an example, because I don't know what you're going to find. You report what you, if you don't have anything on education, you can't report it. But I guarantee you, these shooters have something in common, and I just want to know what it is, whatever it is. They all got red shoes, don't put red shoes down, I don't care. I want, I want a prototype of these shooters that I can share with the people in District One, and I'm, I'm going to send that information. I would be happy because this is timely because they want that information in Washington, DC. We were up there last year, dealing with CIP, and we made a big hit. We performed on the national stage regarding our CIP program. But if we got something, you got something innovative that you all have done over there, I want it. Let's go.
Mr. Vice President?
Mr. Small?
Yeah, I would like to also draw on Councilman Richardson on some of the things that he had mentioned. There was on the new, one of the local news stations the other night where there was a resident was talking about the shootings in her immediate community, and she was pleading for help. And I would like for the, and I guess the Public Safety Director to take up on his wing for some type of public education for the public, because the public is out there crying for help. And, you know, who can they cry to except for the police department, which are supposed to be the professional over crime? I mean, for the last two or three weeks, we've been having shootings back to back to back to back, and the public is out there saying, you know, what to do. I mean, and you know, you have some people or some citizens are concerned about, you know, retaliation. I had actually met with a group on last Friday at Revelation about the church, and I pretty much had to educate them and tell them, "Hey, if you scared, block your number out and call the police department." You know, the police department has to respond on every call, you know, if it's a fake call or a truthful call, but we need to do something to more educate our public as to what to look out for to prevent different crimes that is actually going on in our communities. Because again, for the last three weeks, there has been a spike of shootings in our neighborhoods. And I do understand that, you know, back in the spring, I also made a plea out for some type of initiative be done if it's nothing but roadblocks or et cetera. It said that something's being worked on, not too sure if it's still being worked on or it's worked on or something, but the average citizen out there thinking that nothing's actually is going on, that we are just sitting back and letting crime, you know, escalate higher and higher and higher. So I'm not too sure if that needs to be some type of social media campaign or something that needs to actually, you know, what can actually can happen, but the public need to be educated to know, need to be educated to know that something is going on, and the Mobile Police Department is on top of things that is going on within the crime within our community. Because again, they out there pleading, and you know, some of them, they plead within themselves, they plead within the council members, but as far as the coming down here and addressing, you really don't get that from them, because again, they're scared of retaliation. But we need to show that, hey, you know, Mobile is not about crime. I know that our mayor, you know, he had campaigned about the safest inferno city by 2020. I mean, we five months away from 2020, and we need to try to make this a reality. Thank you.
I think all of this commentary has been helpful. I'm going to ask that our Public Safety Direct, our Public Safety Committee Chairperson, Mr. Richardson, would get with our Public Safety Director and Chief, yes, sir, and Chief Batiste, and call that meeting so that we can-
Yes.
-go into all of these details in greater detail and hear more about the plans that both the chief and the Public Safety Director have relative to these important issues.
I hope to announce that today.
Mr. Police Chief?
I'd like to respond to the idea of what's happening in relationship to crime in, in the community. And so in many of these community meetings, we are getting the information out to the residents in those areas that, about the activities that we're doing. We started back in March, an operation called March Madness, and when we did Operation March Madness, there were not roadblocks, but our, our target of, our focus of interest at that time were vehicles that were driving around the city with no tags or expired tags. In our efforts of addressing that during, from March till about the end of June, we were able to remove nearly a hundred guns from the streets of the City of Mobile. One of the things that I always say when I speak to the media and as I speak to this council, if we tell people what our offense is, it gives everybody an opportunity to play in a defense around- plan a defense around what we're doing. We have to be strategic in what we do as a law enforcement agency, and so we don't always get up in front of city council and say, we're doing these things, or in public safety meetings, because people devise strategies around the things that we do. Councilman Richardson mentioned the idea that we need to identify some of these things at the individuals that are committing some of these crimes. And you say, well, if they got red tennis shoes, well, you know, if we stopped everybody at red tennis shoes, somebody would be complaining about us profiling. And so we have to think about the things that we do and how we put the information out there that we're putting out there, because people expect for us to respond. People are always thinking that law enforcement is being oppressive, and we have to make sure that we are doing those things that are not oppressive to the citizens of our community, while also trying to make sure we maintain the safety of those that live in our community. Our, our Department of Strategic Initiatives do an outstanding job with the things that they do, the trauma-informed part that we're dealing with, dealing with our victims of crimes. Again, as you know, people that are traumatized oftentimes do not like talking to law enforcement, and so therefore, we have to develop a rapport. But you also have to keep in mind that when you develop strategies around these type of things, it requires you to hire additional personnel. And when you hire additional personnel to carry out some of these activities, oftentimes you guys see that in ways of why are your budgets increasing in those particular areas? So the things that you're talking about, many times they require sometime additional personnel to gather the data that you're looking for. In particular, Councilman Richardson, we are, from the date that you asked for that, we have started asking him to look at when a kid, if a kid graduated from high school or not, if he has a GED, because those things appear to be important to some of the questions that you were asking. So we're moving in those areas, and we were not able to go back and get five years of data, but, but going forward, we're looking at making sure we capture that kind of data as we move forward. Thank you.
Okay. The only thing I would like to say to that, is once a child, a kid murdered somebody, all of a sudden, they tell us everything about that kid. He dropped out of school, they went on, he was expelled from school five times, these are records nobody's supposed to see. He was expelled so, so many times, he was a bad kid, they depend a whole picture that gets too late. Should have given us that picture before he fired the weapon. I just, Mr. Chairman, I just want to take one second to say, when I took, when I came on to council in 1997, the worst community crime-wise in the City of Mobile was Trinity Gardens. They, they had fired at the police in the daytime. We couldn't get the bus to go out there, couldn't get a taxi to go out there. The taxi would take them on the service road and drop them off. They were afraid to go inside of Trinity Gardens. I wouldn't accept that. I wouldn't accept that. I got with the mayor and the police chief. Blight breeds crime. It was more blight in Trinity Garden than any other community in City of Mobile. We fought blight, we took the blight out. I asked the Department of Court Judge if he would hold court at the Dodge Community Center. We wrote tickets to every blighter, and I invited the community to come to the court, and we called their names, and marched them down there, and he fined them. The next thing we came out there, we saw no blight. The second thing we had to do, I sent a letter to every homeowner in Trinity Garden, and inside that letter, I had a self-stamped addressed letter to the police chief. And I told them, we don't want you calling nobody, we don't want you talking about this. If you know who the criminal is, write his name down, put it in the, in the address, put the, put it in the envelope, seal it, give it to the mayor, man. Don't sign your name to it. They were able to get them all out of there. We got them out of there. Today, Trinity Gardens is one of the safest communities in the City of Mobile. I know what we can do, because we have already done it. I know what we can do. It know how much it costs the City of Mobile, nothing. It cost them to die. A stamp. Want to do the same thing about regarding violent crimes. It can be done, I've already done it.
All right.
Mr. Vice President, just want to comment, I'm sorry.
Ms. Rich asked.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate that. I will be brief.
And then we're going to need to move on with the agenda.
I know we do, we have a busy meeting. I would just like to urge the council members to become familiar with Project Thrive, which is integrating not just police resources, but other resources in our community, like mental health or hospital educators, that are coming together in order to attack the problem of meeting head-on families that come forward that are identified through incidences that happen in our community. And I thank them for that. It's, it's a wonderful program. I wish more people knew about it. And again, if the council would learn about that, I think you'd be very, very impressed. And the statement by the chief that the council might be pushing back on resources for public safety, I don't think there's ever been a council that doesn't see that as the number one priority of our resources. So bring it on and make it the most it can be. It's already very high, but again, that's what our citizens expect. That's the only reason we became a municipality, was initially to provide public safety services. It's what our state requires. So again, putting resources where they're helpful is so important, whether it's in traffic patrols or in the type of programs that the police are initiating, or, you know, just anything to do, police and fire, public safety. A number one, and I don't think there'd be any council person that would say that's too much money going there when it's needed. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Small?
Yes, I was saying, was going to say the same thing that Councilwoman Rich had just mentioned about what the chief has stated about budgeting with personnel. When it comes around to public safety, I don't know too many council people up here that will go against that, because again, that's what our citizens rely on us to, for, is public safety. And another thing I wanted to mention too was, you know, you know, talking about personnel, I really think that there needs to be another big launch of a campaign with the police, because a lot of calls that I receive is that we don't see police officers enough in our community, or patrolling our communities. And that's one thing that we need to do, is really try to recruit and campaign for more officers within the City of Mobile. Because while the cat's away, the mouse will play. And that's what we've been having a lot, a lot of mice are playing out here in our community. And that's making our city not looking so hot. So again, while the cat's away, the mouse will play. So we need some more officers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Small, and Mr. Richardson, if you could process of that committee meeting.
I will.
And hopefully we can have Mr. Graves to come. This department has really been working hard a long time. I've known him even from back on my school board days. He's been integral in all of these activities, to be proactive, and I know they're working hard. If we could have Mr. Public Safety Director, Mr. Police Chief, if they could come and give us more information about Project Thrive, so that we can get that information out through our various social media outlets. There may be other families that need the same help and assistance that the letter writer wrote, Mayor Stimson. And they just need to be connected to this project, and we want to be that conduit to connect them. This has been a great discussion. I'm now, we're going to change gears a little bit, I have a proclamation to present to the Reverend Dr. Johnny McMorris. And I'm going to ask Dr. Morris to come to the podium. Romans 13:7 says, "Render therefore to all that doth tribute, to whom tributis do custom, to whom custom fear, to whom fear, and honor to whom honor." And it is certainly my privilege on behalf of this great council and our mayor to present this proclamation to Dr. Morris on the occasion of his retirement as the pastor of the Woodridge Baptist Church. This proclamation reads thusly. I'm going to read this proclamation, and then ask that you would come and take a picture with us and Mayor Stimson, so that we might have it for our archives, and you might have it for yours. The proclamation reads thusly. Whereas Reverend Dr. Johnny McMorris will be honored on Sunday, August 25, 2019, at Woodridge Baptist Church by his church family and friends as he retires as senior pastor, and whereas he accepted the Lord at the age of eighteen, followed his call into the ministry at Maple Avenue Baptist Church in Geneva, Alabama, in 1967, and has dedicated over fifty years of his life spreading the word of the Lord. And whereas Dr. Morris, a graduate of the University of Mobile, has helped build and pastor over eighteen churches in Alabama, including Bethel Baptist, White House Baptist, Tillman's Corner Baptist, Heritage, Old Spanish Fort, Jubilee, and Woodridge Baptist Churches. And whereas he has served on the Alabama State Board of Missions, the Executive Board of the Alabama State Convention, as a moderator of the Mobile Baptist Association, as the first president of the Board of Regents of the University of Mobile, and a trustee of the University of Mobile. And whereas with the love and devotion of his wife of fifty-three years, Miss Kathy, and their three children, he has given guidance and spiritual inspiration to his congregation while passionately advocating for his community. And whereas Pastor Morris has wholeheartedly served the Lord as a pastor, and he will continue to follow his calling in the ministry by going forth to help build and grow churches. Now therefore, we, the members of the Mobile City Council, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 20, 2019, as Dr. McMorris Day in the City of Mobile, and urge all of our citizens to join with us in extending to Reverend Morris our sincere congratulations and best wishes for many more years of good health and happiness. We will congratulate you, ask that you, come on up, we congratulate you on all your hard work. We look forward to his very lively commercials during the Christmas and Easter holidays, and wish that he would have many more years on the battlefield for the Lord. Yes, sir. Congratulations. And I want to present that to you. And, go ahead. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Uh. Congratulations. Come on. Come on. All right. All right. Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate this.
All right.
Good luck.
Keep going. And Pastor Morris is the father-in-law to our newest secretary of the City Council, Ms. Courtney Morris. Will you raise your hand? All right. So we just want to acknowledge that, and we hope that you have a happy and prosperous retirement. Yes, sir. Madam City Clerk?
Um, oh, we have presentation from Peter Toler.
Mr. Toler, I don't see him.
He's gone.
He's gone?
He's gone now, yeah.
Back to work.
Communicate, adoption of the agenda.
So moved, second.
Been properly moved and second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is adopted.
Appeals, we have requests for a wave of the noise ordinance on September the 12th on St. Anthony Street, September 6th on I-10 Industrial Parkway North, and August 24th in Benville Square.
So moved, second.
Been properly moved and second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We have the appeal of Gary Smith, SOS Towing, concerning, concerning the decision of the Mobile Police Department to suspend his company from the MPD record rotation
Let me say, as they're preparing, we have several appeals today, and while each individual will be given time to present your case, I would ask that in the interest of time, that you would focus on the issues at hand. Particularly and singularly, did you charge customers the amounts that are detailed in the respective letter we've received from our chief of police? And I believe our first hearing, will you call that out again for me? Madam City Clerk?
SOS Towing.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, I'm Harry Satterwhite. I'm here for SOS Towing. You may have received a letter from me about ten days ago. I sent one to the mayor, I sent one to the council about what's going on with this. I just want to know, I have tremendous respect for the Chief Batiste, and Director Barber, and the mayor, we think you're doing a wonderful job running the city. Hopefully this will be under the category of constructive criticism. But what's going on with these towing companies is, is not a good look for the City of Mobile. We hear a lot about being pro-business, but right now, the way this is going, we're basically running these companies out of their business. Imagine if I told you right now, I'm going to take away eight percent of the income that you make every year. And then imagine if I told you in thirty days from now, I'm going to do that again. And I can just snap my fingers and make that happen. Well, that's what's happened to these companies. Now, I understand there's an investigation about what they charged, but their position is that there's a federal law that pre-vents the city from being able to regulate their tow rates. Now, that's well-established, it's in the letter that I sent, I don't want to get into the weeds on that, because you have excellent counsel to tell you whether I'm right or wrong about the law. But there's, there's the Constitution involved here, and you know, the Reverend Morris talked about the prayer that the founding fathers said at the beginning, and I, I noticed it was talking about our oppressors from overseas that were oppressing us. Well, that brings to mind this case, because the government in this case is oppressing these companies. They are innocent until proven guilty under our Constitution. Under the Fourteenth Amendment, the government has taken a property right from them without due process of law. Five of these towing companies have been selected while others haven't, to be shut down and investigated, and that's not an equal protection of the law under the Fourteenth Amendment. So they do have some solid law, and I think this is the first time a lawyer has come down here, actually presented that to you in that way. You know, they're laypeople, and these are blue-collar people. You know, they're not, you know, somebody to come down here and give you a sophisticated legal argument about what their position is. My letter, though, reached out to everyone to say, let's try to be reasonable instead of going out, conducting searches of their businesses, some of them in their homes, in one case, knocking down their door. You have officers that are armed, flak jackets, and all this, when the ordinance says if somebody's doing something wrong, there to be issued a citation, and, and you can take it through municipal court. But we didn't do that, we went and knocked down doors and grabbed records from these people. So it seems like we're being very heavy-handed about this. I'd like to try to maybe back it down on their behalf and the city's behalf, and try to reach a settlement where we don't have all this ugliness about this. They're willing, the ones that I can talk to and represent, to compromise on their side. And so I would hope the city would compromise, we can find an ordinance that would meet the needs of the citizens of Mobile, and the city, and the towing companies. So I'm just offering that, and I'm appealing to you to not shut down SOS Towing for another thirty days, because now we're talking about sixteen percent of their income is out the door, gross, before taxes. So who here could withstand that? You know, that type of a hit on their income on an annual basis and still operate? Basically, if, if the city keeps doing this, they will run out of, run out of business. Several of these will just go out of business, well, you won't have to regulate them anymore then. They're gone. These are mom-and-pop businesses. You know, one fellow has already told me, due to the publicity that's in the paper about them, there's a statement saying, you know, all tow companies are gouging people, that he's just tired of it, he's going out, he doesn't want to do this anymore. You know, one of my other clients, his father started this business forty-five years ago, he inherited it from him. You know, one fellow has already told me, due to the publicity that's in the paper about them, there's a statement saying, you know, all tow companies are gouging people, that he's just tired of it, he's going out, he doesn't want to do this anymore. You know, one of my other clients, uh, his father started this business forty-five years ago, he inherited it from his father, and he just wants to continue, follow the law, follow the ordinance. Y'all know there've been confusing memos from the police department about the ordinance, and the city itself was charging the same amounts that you're investigating the tow truck companies for. So this is not a good look for the city to investigate the tow truck companies for charging same rates as, as the city does. So I just ask that, on the SOS appeal, that you please consider these comments, and I'm open to try to work it out in any kind of way that I can.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I just, I just want to make certain that, uh, all of my colleagues are aware of exactly what we're doing here. Uh, this is an administrative hearing. Uh, so, uh, the tenets of the Constitution and federal law, state law, uh, that's for a court to decide, that this is not a court, this is an administrative hearing, and our aim today is to decide whether the police chief abused his discretion in suspending this company. And if any of the persons who filed the appeals can produce evidence to show whether the police department is an error, we'd ask that they do that. So, so going over the tenets of the federal law and, uh, the founding fathers and, that's more across the way, that's the judicial side of it. This is an administrative hearing, and we, we're here solely to decide whether or not, uh, the chief abused his discretion in suspending these various companies. Uh, we'll now hear from our police chief.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Uh, I stand here before you, first of all, to talk about the transparency in which we as a police department has tried to address, uh, our actions from an administrative standpoint within the department. Uh, we've conducted an administrative overview which is still ongoing, uh, and as we have conducted that administrative overview, when we've identified areas where potentially we could have, uh, acted, uh, overcharged individuals, we have made those individuals whole, uh, those customers whole for the overcharge. Uh, I think that in the documents that I will provide to this council to look at, you can see that, uh, our oversight is a matter of overcharge based off whether or not they, the customer got credit for the first two days of storage, if they retrieved their vehicle within the first five days. And so these documents will be available for the council to review, and you will be able to see the consistency in the overcharge there, that would indicate to this council that there was no intent, uh, simply administrative oversight, uh, by our personnel. This is a due process hearing, as councilman indicated, which addresses SOS Towing, A-plus Towing, and, uh, Southport Towing, uh, for me to suspend them for an additional thirty days from the record list in violation of the city of Mobile Record Ordinance. The standard of review, review again, is, is that I, as police chief, did I abuse my discretion and authority when I suspended these companies? Ms. Ramon will present evidence that MPD investigated and presented to me, uh, and gave me the evidence that gave rise to the suspension. And so I submit to this council today is that the record company should be prepared to answer the following questions. Did they tow the vehicles or vehicles on the invoice? Is the invoice mentioned in the suspension letter accurate? If so, is the invoice amounts correct? If not, what proof do they have to refute the invoice MPD has submitted? And if the invoice contained overcharges, what efforts have they made to rectify the overcharges? Have they reimbursed their customers? I think that's what's set for review today, and if they can answer those questions, then, uh, the Mobile Police Department stands ready to honor, uh, the decision made by this city council on today.
Attorney Ramon?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to just briefly address, uh, Mr. Satterwhite's comments. I will agree with him that this is not a good look for the city. Uh, I believe that the police department has been reasonable in its investigation and its suspension of these companies. Um, I believe that, um, the police department has the duty to listen to customers, to listen to citizens when they come to us and say that they have been mistreated, and they have been overcharged. The first suspension was for thirty days. We presented the companies with the date of the alleged violations, the location of the violations, and the amounts that we deemed that were, we deemed that they had overcharged. After we left this hearing, there was a lot of, that was said in the media. And after the media played the city council, um, hearing, and there was some, uh, interviews done, customers started calling Mobile Police Department. We, as a department, are charged with listening to customers and citizens when they say that they have been violated, or there's been laws that's been violated. And so we could not turn our heads and say, no, we don't want to listen to you, we've already suspended them one time. We had a duty to listen to these people. And once we listened to them, we determined that there was additional information that we did not have when we brought the first suspension. Now, we're going on the city ordinance, and this ordinance gives us the authority, or gives the police chief the authority, to suspend a company more than just one time. I liken it to a burglary suspect that the police department has, has caught. We, we charge him with one offense, but when we start talking to him, and his picture's plastered on the TV, other people start calling in and say, yeah, that's the guy that robbed me. They call the police department. We can't say, well, no, 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 we got him for this one robber, we don't want to listen to you about this robbery that happened to you two days ago, or a month ago, or a year ago. So when people come forward to us and say, we have been wronged, we have a duty as a police department to listen to those charges, and then we investigate it. So we're here today on the second offense, the second, the second time for suspension, for information what we did not have on the first offense. And so for the second suspension, what we did is, once again, we gave them notice of the location of the violations, the date of the location, and I broke down this time, as I did before, the amount that was overcharged. Now, this is an administrative hearing. The issue is, did you violate the ordinance? If you didn't, you come before the order, the board and say, you, you, you did not do it, and you provide us records. We have records before you, and for the SOS, I'll turn it over to Assistant Chief Hodge. In the letters of suspension, I wrote on August 9th, two suspensions, two, I mean, the, the reasons for the suspensions. And as the chief has, uh, told you, we looked at our internal workings, we made it right. But I didn't hear Mr. Satterwhite come up here and say, I didn't do it, and here's records to show that I did not make this tow. He had access, he could have had access, he's got access, I gave him the dates, the times, the locations, and the amounts that he's overcharged. I didn't hear any testimony that either, yes, I did overcharge these people, and I reimbursed them, or no, I didn't overcharge them, and the documents that you submitted to me was incorrect. But what, what the police department is willing to do today is to put our money where our mouth is. We have records, and we're going to show you what we have as far as records are concerned, and the reasons and the basis why we have determined that a second suspension is in order. So I'll turn this over to Chief Hodge on SOS.
Mr. Vice President, members of the council, um, as Ms. Ramon indicated, this second suspension involves additional cases, uh, that, that came before us. Uh, there's three cases, actually. Um, of these three cases, we have SOS towing invoices with amounts, um, that are, that are not congruent with, um, charges allowed by the ordinance that is in place at this time. Uh, this very first case, there's an overcharge of $160, a bill that should have been $245 if the ordinance would have been followed, was billed out at $405. The other two cases are similar, uh, in the amounts. These are, um, request for SOS towing to remove vehicles involved in traffic accidents at the request of Mobile Police Officers. These vehicles are owned by our citizens, um, they are acting under the ordinance that is in place at this time, when we summons them to a scene, we, uh, are charged with their care, uh, from beginning to end. It doesn't end for us when the vehicle is removed from the scene, we still have a duty to ensure that these citizens' vehicles are, are taken and properly cared for, and they are charged in a manner laid out by the city ordinance.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes, um, Chief, Chief Hodge? If on the date that you all went to SOS Towing, and all of the information you have right now on SOS was in the building, the date that you went in there, every bit of information, nobody, you didn't have to wait on nobody else to call you, you had all that information at, on, at hand that you have now, what would have happened? Would you all have given him thirty days?
The, the information that we obtained, uh, at SOS Towing was very limited, actually, we did not obtain any information. Uh, I believe your question is, had we obtained all of the business records, what would we have done at that time?
If, if you had, if, if, if he, if SOS had in their office all of these violations that you now have, the date you went over there, what would have happened?
The, uh, we would not have acted any different than we're, than we're acting now.
Would he have been given sixty days?
Sir?
Would he have, would you have given him sixty days?
No, sir. Uh, as, as the count, as the ordinance reads, the most we can suspend someone for a first violation is thirty days. We could not have immediately given him sixty days, ninety days, or anything beyond thirty days. Uh, as Ms. Ramon indicated, uh, just in, you know, comparing it to a burglary suspect, when we find additional cases, we bring additional charges, in this case, additional suspensions. Uh, again, there was no records obtained from SOS Towing as part of the criminal investigation, the search warrant that was conducted that day. These are cases that have came forward since, since that time, through, through other means.
It, it will appear to me, this is a council ordinance.
Yes, sir.
It says, first violation from ten to thirty days, uh, you all elected not to go with ten, not to go with twenty, but you went all the way to the max, gave them thirty days. It seems to me what the ordinance is saying, that after this date, whatever date you suspended, if they do that again, then you go ahead and give them thirty-five more days. Not, 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 what I'm saying is that the information you're bringing to us now was done before you suspended them, so you've suspended them, you, you didn't suspend them for during that. And since you suspended them, I don't see where you all brought anything down here to say, they violated again, they, they, I don't see nothing say they violated again. Let, let's just say tomorrow, so are you saying that if tomorrow, somebody bring you a bill that five years ago, they charged too much, you're going to suspend them the third time? If somebody come back to you tomorrow, tomorrow, my point, the way I see this, the reason they put it like this, say, for the first violation, this is what you do. The second violation mean, the first violation didn't help this company at all, they out there, violate all over again. And then if they still violate after that date, you go to the third violation. Not that you go to the first violation, say, what, what you got over there? I got over here where they, where they didn't, you got anything? Yeah, I got over here where they did, well, let's give them another, another days for that, what else? I don't think that was the intent of this ordinance. I don't believe it was the intent of this ordinance.
Richardson, uh, Constable Richardson, I'm going to defer to Ms. Cochran on, on this, uh, interpretation of the ordinance for the city council.
So what is the question? So, I mean, I'm serious, I mean, what, what, okay, so...
This, this is the issue I raised, that had all, had they found all of the information that they have now, when they raided, when they raided, they had, let's just say they had six violations when they raided it, would they have given him any more than thirty days?
They couldn't, by law, the ordinance says the maximum for the first violation is thirty days.
Right.
So after the first suspension period, or during the suspension, additional evidence was received, according to the testimony, that there were violations that the police department didn't know about, and they acted on those violations.
But all, I'm...
Can we point that out in the ordinance, because I'm, I love the interpretation of Mr. Richardson. You know, if I get, if, if my violation is, is unknown to me, or whatever, sorry about this. And Fred, if you want to just take the mic back, you just say so, but I, but I hear you, in that one had five violations, one had four violations, one had three. They knew about it, it was called to their attention, and, and, and this is a slap on the hand, it's administrative while you prepare criminal, if you're going to do criminal. And so to compare burglary with this is not, is not fair, because that's a criminal thing, so we take that off.
We also think...
But they got their, I, I, hold on, Mr. Chairman, I'm not asking for any response at this point.
Mm-hmm.
If I could, um, they have served their thirty days, and that's what the ordinance says, if, if they buy, if they are found in violation, and there's several different categories, for storage, or for equipment, or, or for cleanup, or whatever the charge is, there's a difference in what you can suspend them for. So we got the max, Mr. Richardson points it out, they got the max, and during that time, we weren't able to, to, to get a criminal case on them yet. So we go back and, and somewhere in the ordinance, and I'm going to ask that question at the end, there, it's being claimed to us that they can just continue to go on other evidence that wasn't revealed in the first finding. My thought is, that if it happened prior to the violation where we caught them, the first violation is the first violation, whatever it is, like they continued, and the ordinance as I read, is for if you don't straighten out, if you don't correct your action, it doesn't say you have to repay, it just says that if there's an, an additional violation after the first, that there can be up to another thirty days. My interpretation is that, so far, evidence has not been presented that there were violations of, on a future date from the first. Does that, does that track? Do my colleagues understand what I'm saying? So the question for our council is where, and our council, where in this ordinance does it say that I can have as many violations, I can give out as many thirty-day suspensions as I have found violations regardless of their date of, of, of act?
Right. So this is an administrative appeal. The issue is not whether you agree with the chief's interpretation of the ordinance, or whether you agree with what he did, or if you were the chief, you would have done it differently. The issue is, did he follow the ordinance? And the ordinance can reasonably be interpreted to allow a suspension for each violation. One could easily see that this ordinance never contemplated the situation that is before you, where there were multiple instances of overcharging, and not one person has come to this council and presented the invoice on the date and time in question and said, I did not overcharge the person. Not one. And so it's, I, I can, I, I know, I, I get what you're saying, but from a purely narrow legal point of view on an administrative appeal, the question remains, did the chief abuse his discretion, and he is entitled to some deference because his department is the one charged with enforcing the ordinance?
Ms. Rich wanted to speak, and then we'll come back to it.
Thank you. Um, I'm listening carefully to my colleagues, but initially, it was very clear by Chief Baptiste that, um, they will set out what, um, was discovered as not in keeping with the ordinance for overcharging. The businesses have been made aware of the date, how mu- how much, and it's this forum right now that is, the people who receive this information have made an appeal to this council. So it's their time to show us receipts that refute the information that the police administration staff is telling this council about overcharging based on the council's, not this council, but on a council ordinance that regulated what those prices could be. So I'm waiting to hear from the people that made this appeal. One had an attorney, I guess it was just for the SOS, the first hearing we're listening to. I did not hear anything or been given any documentation that says these dates, here's what I charged. And I did not overcharge based on the ordinance. So I'm staying focused on that, and I think that's our charge right now, is strictly to look at the paperwork that the staff worked on, the administration worked on, and why they put them through a suspension for another 30 days, because the ordinance reads that they can do this. Normally, these are probably scattered about with businesses. It's not boom, boom, boom in a row. But it gives them that, a privilege of additional information, which, like they said, came forward because the public became aware of this problem that they were uncovering. And now more people have claimed, more paperwork came to them. So I'm waiting for the companies to show me paperwork that is contrary to what they've been told has been overcharged.
Mr. Chair?
It's pretty simple.
Mr. Richardson, and then Mr. Williams.
It's one thing for us to say that the wrecking company has to prove that the evidence presented to us was false. They have not done it. That's number one. Number two, the wrecking company is asking us to see whether or not the action of the police chief was arbitrary and capricious. That's the issue I'm focusing on. Was it arbitrary and capricious to suspend them a second time? And they had not violated anything after the first time. They had not committed any violations after you cited them the first time. And I'm... There is a word called contributory negligence, which you can't cite me if you wrong too.
Ladies and gentlemen, now we ask you upfront with the rules, no public outcry.
And, Tony Cochran, is there anything, is contributory negligence? For instance, if a person is on the street, got on black clothes, is running on black top in the industry, did somebody hit them? They're not going to collect from no insurance company because they contributed to their own harm by not getting out the way with all them clothes on. So I'm saying, we can't do nothing to contribute to our own harm.
The concept of contributory negligence is applicable in personal injury cases, which are decided in courts of law. Again, this is an administrative hearing. And I get what you're saying. Maybe fundamental fairness is what you're getting at. You know, that's maybe one way to articulate it. All I'm saying is, what the ordinance says, what the ordinance says is that the chief of police may, in his discretion, remove the name, the company's name, from the rotation list for the length of time set forth below. First violation, 10 to 30 days. Second violation, 20 to 35 days. The testimony from the chief is that he interprets this ordinance to mean that every time he finds a violation, he's entitled to impose a suspension. I don't know if I would do that. All I'm saying is that he is the official charged with enforcing the ordinance. It's just an administrative. And the place to complain about that is not...
Anyway.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams, then I'm coming right to you, chief.
And again, this is not about guilt. Notice, we did not have the wrecking companies come down and say they were never not guilty. They didn't say that. Their argument is not here saying, "We never overcharged." What they're saying is, is that we have received our punishment, and it's time to let us up. And I think that's in all fairness. You know, again, I'm interested in somebody's interpretation that's different than mine that says that, man, we might have 18 charges against this company, but yet we're going to turn it out in 30-day increments. I don't think that, I don't think there's anybody would stand before us and say they think that that was the intent of the original ordinance. What we do have before us is, and let me see if I can say this correctly, is the chief and his department proper, properly, that is, as we would, interpreting our ordinance to say that it's following the procedures that we believe are outlined in the ordinance. At this point, I would, I just can't get to that point. I would simply say that we either have to act on the first and show violations after that date, or we have to let them up. Thank you.
If I could add real quick, I think there's three times that they can be suspended and then removed. So if anything, it's trying to work with the industry if they are clerical errors, or mistakes, or overcharged because they thought they could, or whatever. They're given some opportunity. So again, this is unusual in the sense that it's coming simultaneously, but there is a finite point to this, as far as the city's concerned, of keeping good actors, so to speak, on the rotation. And those that cannot, they do get three chances, I guess, for lack of a better way of looking at it. Am I correct about that?
Yes, you are.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I am the chief of police, and I am extremely proud to be standing here before this council in this uniform. But I also have a responsibility to the men and women that wear this uniform and the other employees for the city of Mobile. And when I hear terms like contributory negligence, and we have the audience applause, and this council just said, "How do we get more men and women to come wear the uniform and serve the people of this city?" There is something wrong with that. And we really have to address those things because there are people that will not wear this uniform because they stand and they get attacked sometime by those that are supposed to represent them.
Chief Batiste, chief...
I understand, but the words were said.
Chief, let me just say, you won't find in the 300-some-year history of the city of Mobile a council that has supported our law enforcement any stronger than this iteration of the city council. And so I'm going to ask respectfully, let's make certain, let's not go down that road, chief. I see where you're coming from in one sense, but that's not helping us get where we need to be on this particular hearing. With all due respect, chief, and I understand that you're passionate. I wouldn't be, if I were into your particular shoes, maybe I would be passionate as well. But our goal here is to try to get through this hearing. And our attorney has given us her interpretation of our ordinance. And has said to us that based on her interpretation, that you're not off-base in coming forward with this subsequent request for an additional suspension. I am yet to hear, we'll open the floor to anyone representing the towing operators or the towing operators themselves, who can come forward and produce to us the same documents or different documents that the police department has produced, refuting any of these claims. No, sir, we need some paperwork. Do you have some...
There is no paperwork because I...
Sir. Sir, one time, are you signed up for an appeal? Yes, sir. Well, when they're finished, if you want to have some commentary, we'll call you up. But the statement came, the statement that came from the police department is that they went, when they went to SOS with the raid, that there was no paperwork.
That's correct, yes, sir.
So did you take anything from SOS?
No, sir. We received no documents and paperwork from SOS towing, no bills.
Wait, one second. Ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen. So, Ms. Ramon, would you like to add anything else?
When we went out to get the documents, we didn't get any documents. The only company that had documents was Cash's Auto. These other companies didn't have documents. Now, we took documents, like paperwork. We didn't take their computers. So if you had a computer, you still had access to records. You could have called me to say, "Look, on my computer on such-and-such a date, I determined this." But how can you work for the city of Mobile and not keep records? Part of that ordinance says that we should be able to audit you. How can we audit you if you don't have records? What company operates with no records? But once again, an administrative hearing as to whether or not this chief of police abused his discretion. You've heard from the council attorney who says he has deference in interpreting the ordinance. We might not like the ordinance. We might find that we need to correct it. We need to amend it. We all agree on that. But the bottom line is, we're here today on the ordinance that is in place right now, and we're here to determine, or y'all are here to determine, whether or not this chief abused his discretion when he suspended those companies. We are here to present what we said was violations. It is really up to the council to determine whether or not we are within the ordinance or we're not within the ordinance. We've got documents, they don't have documents.
Mr. Davis?
Let me ask you a question. My understanding from what you've said previously is that all of these instances, that whether you found them in the office or people have called in, that you have presented these instances to the towing companies and told them the time, and the customer, and the calculated overcharge.
Yes.
And they have had, prior to the meeting we're at today, a full and sufficient opportunity in order to provide you with any conflicting documents they may have. Is that correct?
You're correct, and we have not received anything. The only thing that I've received was emails about federal law, woe is me, you're taking my income, this is not fair, you did this, whatever. But no substantial evidence, no documents to refute these bills that I've received from customers. Nothing to say, you're incorrect. Here's a copy of my bill, and my bill doesn't list this. I've not received any documentation, no phone calls from anybody to say, "Look, let me sit down with you, and let me show you what I've got." Because what you've got is obviously different from what I've got.
Well, our job today, our job today, again, as has been said so often, is merely to determine whether the chief acted arbitrarily or capriciously. But we're not here to decide what the federal law is, how to pass through the city of Mobile, whether we should have a new ordinance or not, whether any of these towing companies are great people or going out of business, or any of that stuff. It's all irrelevant. The only issue we're here to decide is whether the chief acted arbitrarily and capriciously. And so far, of course, we hadn't heard everybody. But so far, I've received no indication that the city acted, that the chief acted arbitrarily or capriciously.
I agree with you wholeheartedly.
Well, we're going to hear now from Mr. Smith, if I'm not mistaken, with SOS. And then we're going to hopefully be in a position to move to the next appeal. Yes, sir.
Okay, first off...
Could you state your name and your address?
My name is Gary Smith, owner of SOS Towing.
And your address?
844 Ashford Road North, Mobile, Alabama 36608. There's emails right here that shows where they have been sent in multiple times, asking for our records to be returned, disputing the charges, because, yes, we received a letter, but no copies of our tickets. Our tickets come with a two-ply, do. Person that paid the bill gets one copy. The other one goes into the file. Okay. Hodges said he didn't get no files. They left there with five boxes. It's on my search warrant where I sign stating that they were taking five boxes of records. So evidently, he has not seen any of them. But I cannot bring a invoice up here and show it to you because I don't have the records. They took them out of my office. As far as computers go, I don't use computers for receipts. I never have, since I've been doing this. I have carbon copies, they get filed monthly. I still have not received my stuff back. They still have my state stuff that was turned over, showing where the admin fee is being charged. They've got my whole unclaimed portal bill that will show that stuff. As far as overcharges, I can't dispute them because nobody will return our calls. We have tried numerous times, sent numerous emails in to speak with them, and none of them will return the calls. Detective Grimes, since day one, has not returned my phone calls, not the first one. And he's supposed to be my point of contact through the police department. That's who they told me to deal with. I've tried to call him, we've sent emails in. He has refused to get back with us. I'm here today, not just on the appeal, I want to go back to work. I have stated, and I have tried to talk to people and say, "Hey, look, the ordinance is not fair. You can look at it 15 different directions if you want to." All I want to do is go back to work. In baseball, you get three strikes, you're out. Okay, I had strike one. I served my 30 days. I'm asking for y'all to put us back to work. Let's sit down and fix this ordinance. If you catch us again, hey, give us our second strike. Give us the 30 days or whatever's there. But to continue to pull, I can have 15 invoices in my pocket right now and only use two at a time every time the 30 days comes up. And then I can be suspended for a whole year? Where does that come in being fair? Like I said, I'm a small business, I'm trying to make a living. That's all I want to get back to. The charges, yeah, I deny every single one of the overcharges. Why? Because I have not seen them, and I have not been given the opportunity to sit down with anybody and explain any of my charges. And that's all I've asked for from day one. I went to the state last week when the 30 days was up with the city. I explained, they gave me the opportunity to sit down with them and get put back on the state. I am now towing for the state again, but yet the city police department has not given me the opportunity to sit down with anybody about my charges. They have not even contacted me. And that's why I'm asking y'all. Y'all are a committee. It should be brought up before you shut a business down. One person should not have that power. It should be done with a committee of people. And that's the reason we voted y'all in here. But we have one person that can come up and say, "Hey, look, take them off the list. I don't want them on there." That one person should not have that power. It should be done with multiple people, with multiple inputs. One person shouldn't have the right to dictate somebody's business or their livelihood.
Ms. Ramon?
Thank you.
Tony Ramon?
Once again, this is administrative and not criminal. But I will tell this city council, I ask that all correspondence go through me when the DA's office started the investigation. I tried to respond to Mr. Smith's request, and I have a return to sender on at least two letters in which I tried to talk to him or explain to him what was going on. He's got my number. Here's the letters that were returned to him. So, there's not much more I can do if I write you and you won't even accept the letter. That's me in good faith.
Oh, is that a signed for letter?
No, it just says "undeliverable" on his address.
Oh, oh, like it's the address. Oh, I was, I wanted to make sure.
And I have emailed back to him. But then I tried to put it in writing for records requests and stuff. But I didn't, my letters came back.
So, just to clarify, you have tried to email? Have you tried phoning him? Because he is saying that he has tried to call and has gotten no response.
No, I've only talked to, made one phone call back. You've got to understand that the criminal investigation, some of the things that he's requesting, like body worn camera video, that's part of the DA's office investigation. He's not, he's not privy to that information. But these, the, the, the.
Ma'am, ma'am, let me say this. Now, this has been multiple times that you've had outbursts. And I clearly stated the rules. Well, now you're outbursts again. And you're doing it again. And so, you know, I'm trying hard not to have you expelled. And you're doing it again. We're going to ask that you would remain quiet. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I, as I said before, I'm at work from eight to five, and after five o'clock, my address, my information is on every letter that I've sent out. I've had nobody reach out to me to give me anything to refute what I'm saying, to say that I was in error. The only response I get is federal law, constitutional law, "You're running me out of business, it's not fair." Nothing to address why the police department has issued the suspensions.
And I hear that, and I appreciate it. I just wanted to, since Mr. Smith had been here speaking and said he had tried to get in touch with, I guess, Detective Brian, and he apparently wants to sit down with someone to go over the charges and the information as he did with the state. So, my question is, is he going to get that opportunity or has he asked for that opportunity that you know of?
He has not requested it through me, to me. And I instructed all detectives working on that case that all requests come through me because there is a criminal investigation, and I don't want to jeopardize the criminal investigation for the district attorney's office. But the allegations that are alleged for the suspension, absolutely, he has a right to come down, talk to the detectives, do whatever he needs to do. I personally went down to the site and asked for receipts. And I was told by the owner that they didn't have receipts in duplicate, that they gave their invoice to the customer and didn't come by and didn't have a receipt. I said, "How do you pay your taxes then?"
I have a question. On those letters that you showed us, are those letters informing about the suspension and what they are in violation? And to your knowledge, he's not, they've not received it.
They didn't request that information. They wanted body worn camera video of what happened during the, uh, the search warrant. They were asking for, um, information on the 911 center. Everything to distract, distract from what the issues were.
Got it. Thank you.
Ma'am, City Clerk? Can we give the next appeal?
Should we, should we go ahead and?
Do you want to vote on each one separately or wait in here?
No, they're individual, so we need to act on this.
That's fine, that's fine.
Move to grant the appeal.
This is a proper motion and second, end of discussion. I just want to say that I totally understand the commentary that I'm hearing from the business owners whose livelihoods have been impacted by this action. I also understand and have to give great deference to the current ordinance that we have and the deference that it gives to the chief to make these calls. What it illustrates to me is that we have a broken ordinance. If we fix the ordinance, I've heard a lot of great ideas from members of this council. I've heard some from industry leaders. Well, I think what we need to work on as quickly as possible, and I know our public services committee under Best Rich has this issue, is to fix the ordinance so that we understand exactly what the rules, what the parameters, what the first, second, third infraction and strikes would be. But right now, we're living under what we have before us. And I have to also give great deference to what my legal representative has said to me, which is, based on what's in black and white as an ordinance today, the chief has this ability to do what he's done. Now, do I, what I, can I say I agree with that 100%? No, that's why we're going to go into a process to fix the ordinance so that hopefully it can be a fair and clear ordinance moving forward. But right now, it is what it is. And so while I certainly hear all these impassioned pleas and cries, uh, the ordinance is the ordinance, and we have the opportunity to fix it. And I'm hopeful that Chair Lady Rich will move expeditiously with, uh, call in that committee meeting so that we can begin to, uh, to fix it and fashion an ordinance that's fair to everyone, that's clear to everybody, and hopefully we won't run into this problem in the future. End of further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All of us? Your motion was to, to grant the appeal?
Right.
Right. All in favor of granting the appeal? Aye. So that's one in favor of granting the appeal?
No, you've got more and more, brother.
Well, let's, I'm going to call it again. All in favor of granting the appeal, will you raise your hand?
Probably need to.
Raise your hand.
Let's have a roll call.
You probably need voice.
Well, we have two, Mr. Williams and Mr. Richardson. All in favor of denying the appeal? Same, aye. So, the appeal is denied 5 to 2.
Can we forego the rest of it and just say that that's, if there's nothing different, that we'll just?
Well, they've signed, they've signed in, we're going to give them the opportunity to speak. Ma'am, City Clerk?
Appeal of Danny Williams, Southport Towing, concerning the decision of the Mobile Police Department to suspend his company from the MPD record rotation list.
Good morning. Or good afternoon.
Good morning, well, good afternoon.
My name's Carol Martin, and I'm speaking on behalf of Mr. Danny Williams of Southport Towing, located at 1310 Dolphin Island Parkway, Mobile, Alabama. If I wasn't confused before I walked in here today, I think I am now, but hopefully I can still convey to you some of our concerns about this. I'm not really sure where the pathway is here to administrative and then legally. I am a constitutionalist, so I tend to go that way just on my own. But I would like to bring up something that hasn't been brought up before, and that is contracts. Mr. Williams and I came last week and we sat in on your meeting, and very informative. And there were a few times that contracts were addressed with the council. And the council says, "We'll look into it, that's a good idea," so on and so forth. Well, in this situation, the tow companies have no contracts and no written agreements with the city of Mobile. And I think that that's a huge issue. You know, a few weeks ago, the attorney spoke that these tow companies had agreed to follow the rules and regulations when they were put on this tow list. There's no agreements. There is someone, as best I can tell, someone sits there and puts these tow companies on a rotation list. And when somebody willy nilly does something wrong, ticks off somebody, they're taken off the tow list. So I think in your own ordinance, again, there's a list of definitions, and one of the definitions is contracts. And in your own ordinance as well, it also points out to a contracted tow company. There are no contract tow companies. So, you know, this isn't, you know, a gentleman's handshake. This is business. Who conducts business like that? You have to have defined contracts, agreements, rules, regulations. We all understand, the ordinance is not like that. And I'd like to point out that it seems like that the council is requesting that someone come up and produce these invoices and say, "I did not overcharge in accordance with the ordinance." Mr. Williams cannot do that because if you would even look at their, um, the search warrants, the receipts that were handed out, there's nothing listed on here about what they took, what they seized, nothing. It just says five boxes, 12 boxes. One of his locations, the receipt is even put on a narcotics unit receipt. Really? And at this particular location, there wasn't even an employee of Mr. Williams. As a matter of fact, the records that they took at this location didn't belong to Mr. Williams. And Mr. Williams has written a letter to the chief of police asking that everything be returned that was searched and seized, to include things that were destroyed. As a matter of fact, this other lady, who doesn't even work for Mr. Williams, where her records that belonged to the state of Alabama were taken. She asked the chief of police to return her damaged, um, materials that were seized. She had a record book where pages were torn out. She hadn't got those pages back. We, and I've conferred with Mr. Williams. He is here to tell you, he doesn't have the receipts to show you, but he did not overcharge his customers. That's it. Are there any questions for me? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. That would be much appreciated.
Refer to the ordinance that's in place. Section 63-52 states requirements for placement on the rotation list. So, anybody that's on the rotation list, it's not a willy nilly thing. You have to follow these rules. And on subsection seven, it says that you have to be an active participant in good standing on the list and execute this form entitled "Conditions for Participating in the City of Mobile Record Towing Call List." So you have knowledge as to what you can and cannot do, and you're given a copy of it. And let me just add to the council. In the last five years, Mobile Police Department has only revoked one company from its record list, and that was Blackwell Towing a while back. This is the second time we have even come before you to even address a suspension on a record company. We have over 50, almost 50 companies participating in the record system rotation list for the city of Mobile. We're dealing with three companies today out of 50.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Williams? I was wondering if the police department could produce, or at least state, when the first violation was and when the second violation was.
This is Southport Towing.
Yes, ma'am. I'm talking about the date that they were violating, not when we found out.
May 9th, 2019, for tow services at Dolphin Island Parkway, indicated a charge of 630,000 dollars.
That's number one, I just need date, I just need date. So, number one violation is May 19th, is that what I heard?
May 9th, and then the second invoice is May 25th for an overcharge of 630,000.
Not invoice. When did we issue the violation on the first, or the notice on the first violation? In other words, we found out they were guilty and we said, "You are guilty of this violation of the ordinance."
The letter is dated.
May 9th. I'm just trying to make sense out of it.
They were suspended.
Right.
I gotta get that out of my head. You're talking about the prior suspensions?
The first suspension happened because of violation A that happened on date?
July 12th. 12.
July 12th. So, first violation is July 12th, July 12th. Second violation? When did it occur? When did a violation occur? Then we found out, when did a violation occur?
I'm about to look at my records.
And look, there's a lot of emotion in here. And I would have wished that, that both sides could have been down. I understand how one that's losing its livelihood could be. But we, on the other side, can ratchet it down just a little bit. These guys are not against us. They're not against the citizens of Mobile. They have been found in violation, and we're going through a procedure, and we can do that just calmly and orderly. I'm really just trying to make sense of it. My only interpretation is not the competence of the Mobile Police Department, not the mayor, not the director, not the chief, not anybody that's served in blue. I would never do that when it comes to policing our streets and investigating. But in an interpretation of an ordinance, I think we all have the, have our own right to interpret. And I just hope that we don't get personal on this interpretation. But what I'm trying to do is find out one thing.
Excuse me, could I just?
Not right now, you have to ask the chair. But let me get my answer real quick, and then you can ask the chair.
I don't have that right now, I need to go through my documents because I've got so many documents in front of me, but I'm going to get that for you.
Okay. That's all, Mr. Chair?
Any, we heard from, uh, Mr., heard from SOS, no, 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 Southport, Mr. Williams. Is Mr. Williams here?
And I'm not related. It'll come up in somewhere.
Any further comment?
Yes. This is on the first page of the records ordinance. It says, "Contract wrecker shall mean that the wrecker company, which has contracted with the city to provide wrecker service requested by the city for public safety reasons." My point is, a contract wrecker is a wrecker who has contracted with the city. There ought to be a contract between the wrecker company and the city according to our own ordinance.
And I think we'll have an opportunity, I think all of us realize that this is a broken ordinance. I think everybody who's sitting here in this auditorium and who might, the 20 or five or 10 people watching us on the internet, have come to the conclusion that the ordinance is broken, and we need to fix it. And we intend to fix it.
We were doing that.
And we've got the right laid on the job. Best Rich is going to lead the charge, working with the public safety director, with the chief, and with the industry to fix the ordinance. It is broken in the, in bunches of ways. But it is in place now, and we have to act according to this ordinance. Is there a motion? What was not heard, though, and I just, is that I asked the question, "When was the first offense?" And I'm being told by the Mobile Police Department that the first offense was on July 12th. It, I was also told while that discussion was ongoing that the second offense was on August 9th. If I may ask one more question, Mr. Chair. When was the notice of violation for the first offense given? What's the letter, date, when did we?
July 12th.
So, on July 12th, we found the first offense and we issued a notice of violation. We communicated that directly with the towing company. And then at a later date, they, not when we found out, but when they committed a second offense on August 9th. Is that a correct statement? That's just a discovery date, right?
That'd be a discovery date.
That'd be a discovery date.
When did that...
Say again.
And it's to my point, Chief, with, again, with all respect, um, the August 9th discovery, without proof, I would believe, is sometime before the first violation. I mean, I don't know that we have proven that we told them what I haven't heard. I'm just trying to be fair, guys. It's we told them they were doing wrong, and they went out and did it again.
That's a whole different matter.
And that's what I'm trying to determine, because if anybody can prove that to me, then I'm done talking. But I'm just trying to put myself in their shoes, and I'm told I'm doing something wrong, and I'm yes, sir, no, sir, and I'm in line. As long as I don't violate again, I don't think I ought to get punished again.
Same way.
As long as it's the same offense. Yes.
Councilman, the reason you wouldn't have any additional infractions is because they were suspended at the time, so they would not have had an opportunity to act in that capacity. I don't know that they will or that they won't, but when we got the new complaint, well, we found additional complaints, we acted on the additional complaints that we received at that time again. We're just following, as Councilman has indicated, a broken ordinance, and our goal is to enforce the tenets of the ordinance. That's our sole purpose for carrying out the actions that we carried out. There's no personal bias related to what we do. We just want to make sure that we're doing what we said we would do when we swore at oath to protect and serve the citizens of Mobile, the Constitution of the United States, and the ordinance of the City of Mobile. So they would not have had an opportunity to commit new infractions because they've been suspended since the time we've identified the first.
Chief, if I could ask you a question, and then we'll move forward. I think I've heard during the course of one of these appeals that there are 50 tow truck companies that are associated with this rotation.
There are somewhere between 40 and 50 tow truck companies. Some of them have multiple locations, so that's why we get to the 50. There's actually about 24, 25 that are named, but some of them have like, a couple of them have like two or three different locations, and so their sites are identified in that 50, that total number that we've identified.
Okay, so we'll go with the 25. I guess my question is, how did you determine which particular firms or which particular companies to be a part of this investigation?
To begin with, these were, when we started looking at documents, these were the companies in particular that had documents that indicated they were overpricing. There may be others. Our investigation from an administrative standpoint is not complete. We constantly get emails about other companies that potentially may be doing, operating outside of what the ordinance says. And every time we get one of those, we review it. We start an administrative investigation to see if they're in compliance with the information that we have available to us. And if they are, then we close that investigation. When we began the investigation, based off the complaints that we were receiving, we started looking at the records that were provided to us, and we were able to see that they were overpricing in the areas that the ordinance did not allow pricing at that time. And so that's the way we got to the point where we're here now.
So the companies that are before us today are companies that citizens have initiated contact with you all and said, "I believe I've been overcharged."
Citizens and members of their own industry that brought evidence to us that they are overcharging.
Okay.
Chief, Chief. Let me say that on yesterday, I received, my office was contacted by Mrs. Teresa Boggs, and Ms. Boggs said she went to the police headquarters with evidence that this towing company had overcharged a citizen, and they refused to take her complaint. And it was so, that the atmosphere was so hostile, she requested security to go to her car. And it's something that I certainly would like for you to look into, that she drove over there with the complaint, and they would not accept the complaint on this particular company. It's something that I would like for you to look into that.
Yes, sir. We will certainly look into it.
And I also would like to say to everybody listening and everybody that's here that I have the highest respect for Chief Baptiste. He has not new it as what he's doing. He's been doing this for a long time. He knows what he's doing. I have a fundamental difference of opinion with him regarding suspensions. I was here when we passed the ordinance, and I voted on the ordinance with the expectation that if a person violated, they expect to be suspended. And if they violated again after they were suspended the first time, you up that, not that you go backwards in time to see, "Well, did they do anything in that?" You're saying that's your interpretation. I'm saying that's not my interpretation. It's just, we have a difference in agreement on this, that's all it is. So, but I have the highest respect for what you do.
Thank you.
I have a high respect for you. Just want to say that.
Move to grant the appeal. It's been motioned, and second, that the appeal be granted.
Correct.
Any discussion? All in favor of granting the appeal, let it be known by the sound of aye.
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 I hear two. All those in favor of denying the appeal, let it be known by the same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
The appeal is denied, five to two. And I say again to each and every one of you from the industry, this is our ordinance. We need to fix it. We're gonna work to fix it, and we're gonna make certain that you all are at the table when we begin to fix it. Madam City Clerk?
Appeal of Chad Fountain, A-plus wrecker concerning the decision of the Mobile Police Department to suspend his company from the MPD wrecker rotation list.
Mr. Fountain?
Yes, sir.
If you could give us your name and address, please.
My name is Chad Fountain, 5713 Three Knots Road, Mobile, Alabama, 36619. I stand here before you today to try to overturn my appeal. As we've talked, the ordinance is broken. I mean, can't, nobody can follow it, is from what I can see. I'm hoping we can get a new ordinance together, you know, to better, for both sides, all three sides, police department, the industry, and just as well as the citizens of Mobile. You know, there has been, the ordinance is so old, there has been other laws that has come into effect that the ordinance has just hadn't kept up with. So, you know, that's where I stand. I just think we need to redo the ordinance, you know? Everybody sit down and redo it, everybody on the same page, you know? I don't think any of us out here is wanting to commit a crime, break the law, you know? I mean, you know, trucks, say, I bought two brand-new trucks back in '08 with all the bells and whistles, $65,000 a truck. Nowadays, you go buy a truck with all the bells and whistles, 120, 127. Ordnance is just so old, I'm assuming that's just where, you know, it's not up to date. It needs to be thrown out, and we need a new one. That's where I stand.
Yes, sir.
Can I comment and announce the meeting while the industry is here in case they want to leave?
That'd be helpful, yes, ma'am.
Okay. The Public Service Committee to address the ordinance will meet on September 10th. That was the best time and date. Two o'clock in the ninth floor at Government Plaza, which is the council's floor. Again, September 10th, it's a Tuesday. It'll meet at two o'clock. And we'll also get that out to the public as well.
Yes, ma'am. And as far as if and when we do get a new ordinance rewrote, we will, you know, sometimes, "No, we don't need no more records. No, this is this, and this is that." I just want to make sure that us five are included in the new ordinance, when it's sitting down and talked about, you know? I just want, we just want to be included. I mean, towing's not, it's not the same anymore since August. It's not the same. I thought we was, you know, we had a good relationship with the police department. We've done things for them free of charge, and I'm sure they scratched our back, too. But it is what it is, and I appreciate y'all's time.
Mr. Richardson has a question for you.
Mr. Fountain, is this your second suspension?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Second suspension, yes.
Okay.
But I only got in the game one time.
I got you.
How do you get two strikes? You pulled two rabbits out of one hat, you know?
I got you.
When you say you only got in the game one time, what do you mean?
There was a meeting a while back. I forget which officer it was, but he says, "We're starting over. Three strikes, and you're out." My first time up to plate, apparently, I struck out. I got my 30 days. I took my lick and waited my 30 days. I never got back in the game to strike out again for my second. I don't understand.
Did you receive the letter with what came from the chief?
I received the letter the day they come and got all my paperwork. And by the way, I heard somebody say a while ago, "The only company that had paperwork was somebody else." No. I'm the only one that had the paperwork, apparently. I hadn't got none of my paperwork back, so I can't bring, I can't, you know? But I did receive a letter saying why my first 30 days, and then why my second 30 days.
Okay, you did get the letter.
So then what I'm assuming, they're gonna go back through the pile. They're gonna pull out two more tickets. Here's your third 30 days. Now you're off the list for good. That's what I'm gonna play it up. I gotta get back in the game to strike out. And I mean, I hear y'all understand that because that's what y'all have been talking about. How can you go backwards if, you know? And I'm willing to put some money on the table. That's what's fixed, that's what's gonna happen. They're gonna go back through all my files, and they're gonna find two more tickets, and they're gonna suspend me another 30 days, and that's gonna knock me out of the game.
Mr. Ramon?
Saturday, police department went out and personally served these three companies with the suspension, and the response, which we got on body-worn camera video of Mr. Finch saying, looking at the documents and saying, "So what? I overcharged someone 250." I would have brought it down to play it, but I didn't think it was necessary, but we do have that video of him saying, "So what? I charged someone 250." And I think that's very sad commentary when we're trying to show you the documents of overcharging.
Mr. Fountain, did you make that statement?
No, not, no. When they come, they come and brought me my paperwork. He called me on the phone on Saturday, on my day off. He calls me on Saturday and says, "Hey, we have some paperwork for you." I said, "Okay, I'll meet you at the shop." I thought they were bringing back my records. Well, when I get there, they give me a second suspension notice that it wasn't even my right name. It had somebody else's name on it. So he had to take it back and get it redone. They redone the piece of paper. So he called me, he said, "Hey, I'll come to you this time since my paperwork was wrong. You came to me. I'll bring it to you now." I said, "Fine, no problem." He calls me up, brings me my paperwork, and I said, "Fine." And I never said anything about, "So what? I charged somebody 250." I mean, I don't understand that. That was one of my bills. That is what they're looking at, but I don't think they understand why that administrative fee is in place. I don't think they understand why.
And so it's your...
And I haven't talked to anybody.
But it would be, you would be offering that you didn't make the statement that Attorney Ramon just attributed to you. "So what? I overcharged someone 250."
No, sir.
You didn't make that?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. Is there any additional commentary you all would like to offer? Is there a motion?
Move to grant the appeal.
Second. They probably moved to the second that we would grant the appeal. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Davis?
There's been a, some discussion today about facts. But again, our job here is not to adjudicate the facts. Our job here is to determine whether, really, under the facts as presented by the chief, the chief acted arbitrarily or capriciously. And again, I haven't, based on what the chief has told me and what I've heard, I can't find that the chief acted arbitrarily or capriciously.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Williams? My colleague from District 5 said, "Was we were to consider what the chief presented to us and then determine whether or not the chief acted arbitrarily." I don't think that the chief believes he's, I believe in absolute no doubt, every person in uniform and the attorneys and the detectives all believe that this is the proper interpretation of the law. I don't doubt that at all. As Mr. Richardson said, I think there's a different interpretation of this law. And as I read it, and I have read it over and over and over, my conclusion comes up every time that they were subsequent violations and not if there was a multiple. And that's our difference, and that's why we are certain to have a criminal investigation completed. It's gonna show up in court, and this is all gonna be interpreted by a judge.
Yes, sir.
There's no doubt about that. Administratively, I read our ordinance differently than the chief does in this case. And I don't think that anybody, I hope, doesn't doubt my confidence and my appreciation for the police department, but at the same time, I just read it differently. So my vote will be the same. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for your time.
Okay. All in favor of holding the appeal, let it be known by the sound of aye.
Aye.
I believe I heard two ayes. Three? All those in favor of denying the appeal, let it be known by the same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
So we have, again, a five to two in denying the appeal, and I want to say to Mr. Smith, Mr. Williams, and Mr. Fountain, that I hope you all will stay engaged. All of us have recognized what the problem is, and we're gonna work quickly to try to remedy the problem. Thank you all for your time, and thank you to our chief, to Mr. Ramon, to our assistant chief, assistant chiefs, and all of the detectives that are spending an ordinate amount of time on this effort. We thank you all because what you're doing is protecting the interest of our citizens, and that is most important. So thank you all as well. Madam City Clerk?
Public hearing today. It's a public hearing to consider approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Gina Houston doing business as faithful and loving caregiver sitting services.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak during this particular public hearing? Ms. Houston?
Yes.
I know you've waited, so we're gonna hear you, but absolutely nobody is in opposition of what you want to do. Go ahead and be faithful and loving to as many who will let you give caregiving to them.
How y'all doing today?
Doing great.
This is the mayor and the council. Imagine this, Gina Houston, I'm on WMB Gospel Station, AM 1360. I'm always sending a shout-out to all the policemen. City of Mobile, I love each and every one of you all. So I'm stepping out on faith with my own business.
That's right.
Amen. I've been working 33 years in health field, and so I decided that the family I worked for, they wanted me to take care of their mother, and so I needed a letter of necessity. And what that is saying, I'm having a private duty business where I go to the homes and take care of my resident. And by, you know, she lost her husband two years ago, and when I met her, she was kind and a dumb, you know, when I met her, but now she looks good. I take her, if that's what I'm trying to get, this letter of necessity for in my vehicle to get her hair done, to get her nails done. Taken to County Hustle Activity Center sometime. Uh, taken to County Hustle and, um, Activity Center sometime, just to get her out of the house. She's almost eighty years old. And by her losing her spouse, she went and went through a draft in her life. But now she's back, she looks good. I, I wanna, you know, take her to the doctor continually, you know, in my vehicle. Make sure she, you know, can do things, 'cause she living a long life at home. They live longer at home than in a facility. I worked in a nursing home all my life, thirty-three years, and I worked in a hospital eleven. So I just want to
Ms. Houston?
Make this her time.
We got you covered.
Okay. Okay, I just wanna make sure she's happy.
That's right. We want her happy, you happy. All of us to be happy.
Okay.
Any, any questions for Ms. Houston?
No.
Well, for Evangelist Houston, any questions? WMOB, give us a shout out sometime, Ms. Houston.
I'll be on the radio this Saturday at eleven thirty. When you hear Marvin Sepp's song, Come On Never Would Have Made It, that's me, Evangelist.
All right. That's a blessing. I hear you. All right. Madam City Clerk? Now, this, this public hearing is closed. Anybody else would like to, I don't, I didn't think so. The public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to consider approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Latavia Randolph doing business as Net Runs LLC.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak or any commentary for this particular public hearing? Your not, public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to declare the structures at fifteen sixty-two Main Street, thirteen sixty-four St. Meter Street, and six hundred St. Anthony, Anthony Street a public nuisance and ordering them demolished.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak during this particular public hearing? Yes, sir.
All right, to give you all a little background, my name's Eric.
We need you. Name and address, please.
Eric Davidson, six hundred St. Anthony Street.
Yes, sir.
Pardon?
The dress you reside at.
Oh, Thirteen Felder Place. Mobile, Alabama, three six six oh six.
But you're talking about the Jackson.
Okay.
Right.
Uh, my name's Eric Davidson. I'm an Eagle Scout. You know, worked my way through school, working forty, sixty hours a week. Moved away for about twelve years. Was determined to come back and make Mobile my home. And, uh, Hurricane Ivan and Katrina did significant damage to my shop located at six hundred St. Anthony Street, which is right across the street from Dunbar School.
Right.
And, uh, I've talked to attorneys about this. I've talked to engineers, architects. Yet, to, to look at my building from the way it's constructed, if I rebuilt the roof today, unless you got on a tall ladder or a bucket truck, you wouldn't know my roof was even there. And as far as the outside of the building, they continue to write me violations. And even as their own evidence, they're saying I have high grass and weeds. And in their own evidence, there is no high grass and weeds. I mean, compared to most buildings, other than the school in a three block radius, I keep the, the public right of ways pristine. I keep the, um, the grass mowed. I keep the sidewalk edged. And, uh, you know, I'm having some financial difficulties right now, some severe health problems. And I just want time to build my roof. As far as the outside of the building, structurally, I mean, I've got a letter here from an engineer that did a survey. And he said structural integrity is, you know, great. And I just, you know, want time to fix my roof. You know, as far as, you know, I would pour y'all to just drive by there. Compared to built, over half the buildings in the three block radius, I mean, my sidewalk and grass in the public right of ways, it's mowed. You know, it's taken care of. It always has been. There was one little stretch when I was in the hot, in and out of the hospital that, that didn't get taken care of. That was three years ago. But, uh, I don't know what I did to make somebody mad. But two different departments, municipal enforcement and environmental, I mean, they put me in jail. They gave me thirty-three days community service. I don't see where that is even constructive. And I mean, it's, they cost me, they cut off my power last summer. The power company cut off.
Did you say you were put in jail?
Yes. And, uh, I was putting, I was picked up by three officers on a Friday afternoon.
Was it dealing with this building?
Yes, sir.
Or was it some other infraction?
No, no, just the building. Okay, I was picked up at five o'clock in the afternoon. The officers weren't aware of why. They were just told me to pick me up for an outstanding warrant. At ten thirty that night, I found out that's, uh, not mowing my grass, some broken windows. I mean, criminals broke my windows, and I guess I didn't fix them in a timely enough fashion for them. And my roof, of course. And then I'm told that, uh, I have to have a cash bond. Well, I didn't know what that was. I've never been arrested in my life. And, uh, they said, well, the bail bondsman can't help you. This is ten thirty at night on Friday night. And I said, well, what are my, uh, uh, choices? They said, well, use that to stay here until, uh, Monday morning for a bond hearing. Well, I eventually came up with the cash. Got somebody to help me out, but it was like, I mean, I'm just flabbergasted.
Well, how, how long ago was this, Mr. Davis?
When I got arrested?
Yes, sir.
May of two thousand seventeen. And this has been going on consistently. I performed community service last summer, community service this summer. And I have kept my grass mowed. I have kept everything as far as the exterior of that building. You know, it's, I mean, it's not the, it's not gonna win any kind of award for being a great looking building.
No, no, it's not.
But I don't think it warrants tearing down, you know, my dream. I mean, it's, it, you know, and when they shut off my power, they didn't give me any warning they were gonna shut down my power. They didn't give me a reason. Had all these freezers full of deer meat and some red snapper and booed in, and I lost it all. And I just think somebody is practicing a little overreach, and I don't think this is the, uh, you've got us doing a great job attracting business here. Business friendly environment. I don't know what I've done to warrant this type of behavior. I'd like to correct it, 'cause I don't think it's got anything related to my building. But that's what they're using against me.
Mr. Mr. Dauphinbach, if you could come and briefly offer any commentary that you, you might be able to offer. Interesting situation here. And the arrest and the community service, all of that was connected to your building.
Yes, sir. Serving time with known criminals. And they all, the first time I got twenty-one days community service, almost everybody I was serving my little community service with DUIs, petty theft and drug offenses. Heck, they all got between five and eight days. And I got twenty-one days the first time, got twelve the second time, still getting more. I'm like, what I gotta do, commit murder to not have to do this?
Well, we don't, we don't want you to do that at all.
No, I was just, you know, joking.
Yeah, it's not even joke about it though, 'cause too much ever going on anyway.
Yeah.
Mr. Mr. Dauphinbach, uh, what, what would you have to say relative to this particular building? He, he's saying it's structurally sound absent the roof, and what would you?
That is the problem. There is no roof. The roof has collapsed. And it's been this way for, like I mentioned before, thirteen years going on, thirteen years. And all we ask Mr. Davidson to do is, is hire a contractor and repair the roof. But he's failed to do so for thirteen years. And because of that, the building has deteriorated, including the electrical system. Exposure to rain, water. And yes, an electrical inspector did make an inspection, found it to be unsafe, and directed Alabama Power to pull the service. And he is correct. Now, to follow up for his, his time in jail, it's because he failed to attend court, his scheduled court date. He missed the appearances. A summons was served for him to appear in court, and he missed the summons appearance date. So yes, an alias warrant by the court system was put out for Mr. Davidson, and he was arrested by the Mobile Police Department so he could appear in court to answer the charges. These are the criminal charges in Environmental Court for the property maintenance code for not having the roof. But also for broken windows on the side of the building. These were the criminal charges that he was to appear in court to respond to. He was found guilty on those charges, and subsequently, he explained to you what the, what the sentence was, the community service. This has been ongoing for thirteen years. And, and all we're asking him to do is fix the roof. That's all.
Well, Mr. Davis, is, is that true that you missed the summons? That you not appear in court?
I was not aware.
Yeah. Uh, let me, come, come on back, Mr. Davis. This, this, wait, Mr. Mr. Davis, hold on a sec. Your five minutes has, uh, am I right?
Yes.
Okay. Let me say this. This building has been, uh, and I say this, I, I can totally respect someone having health challenges. Been there, I can say that I totally respect someone having health challenges. Been there, done that, and will have to continue to deal with it. So I can understand that. Understand financial challenges. Uh, but this building has been a blight and a detraction on their community for a mighty long time. I can remember being first elected to our county school board and riding with my predecessor to that specific site because of its proximity, its close proximity to Dunbar Magnet School. We have parents who are interested in that particular school, see a building of that nature with the roof caved in, the windows out, uh, and feel that, uh, naturally and just immediately feel that the neighborhood is unsafe. And so I guess my question to you, uh, in pre-council, we discussed this and discussed possibly laying this particular item, uh, over for six weeks. My, my, my question to you is, what is your intentions? Are you, do you foresee in the foreseeable future you being able to put a roof on this building? Securing this building and bringing it up to code?
Yes. Uh, I mean, I'm working with an attorney right now. He's told me about some grants that are available. If, if you guys think that, uh, the appearance of the building is, uh, is an issue, do you want me to paint the outside of the building or stain it or whatever, make it look more appealing? If that's an issue, I'll do it. But as far as the, uh, until I can get some grant money, I cannot afford to replace the roof. But I've still gotta earn a living, pay for my medical bills, buy my medicine. And them cutting off my power, they, nobody did an electrical inspection there. They just cut it off without even a word to me. And if, if they'd have looked at it, if they'd have done it, I mean, yes, I do need some more electrical work done. There's no question. But all of the conduit as long as wall, this, the roof has nothing to do with it. It doesn't create any danger to anybody, not even me. I mean, I wouldn't be in there. I mean, most of the roof has been deconstructed. Uh, if, if you want me to improve the outward, outside appearance, I can do that. You know, I can start working on that tomorrow. I can stain the unfinished, the unstained outside cinder blocks on the, uh, side facing Dunbar. Uh, there is no mortar missing from any of my concrete, the column, concrete military units or something like that. Concrete block.
What, what would you envision using in, using the building for? What do you want to do with it?
I've been doing it for twenty-three years. I've used it at, uh, garage repair shop, repair it for cars and trucks. I still use it for that. I don't have near the thriving business I used to, since my health went to hell. But I do stuff on appointment basis only. And, you know, my wish is that, you know, get a grant, replace the roof, and, uh, you know, keep doing what I'm doing. And it's hard to make a living with no electricity.
Yes, sir.
Sir, on the, turning off the electricity protects our public service, I mean, workers like, um, police and fire who might have to go in there in an incident. And if it was a live electricity, an open roof, you could have flames going everywhere and create a terrible situation.
Concrete and cement.
But there's things that could burn within if you're doing repairs. You have an active business license on this site?
I do.
You do? That's interesting. I don't know how that would pass. I mean, it just doesn't look right. I, we were told that there should be a reason to hold this up, but and we've been asked by people about if I could only get a grant. I understand there's grants. Have you ever applied or, or?
I just became aware of it recently.
You just became aware? And how long have you owned this? The whole time the roof's been off since Katrina?
I've owned it for twenty-three years, well over twenty-three years.
Yeah.
Well, uh,
I mean, until I had a disagreement with some people in real estate department about some boundaries, nobody said anything. Like I said, unless you get a tall ladder or a bucket truck, you wouldn't know if I had a roof or not, just the way it's constructed.
Well, but it's not habitable. I mean, you might be using it and...
I've been using it to satisfy my needs.
But it doesn't have a roof.
Pardon?
It doesn't have a roof. So I, I don't know how that's really possible.
It's kinda like a restaurant, I'm not trying to be a smartass, but it's kinda like a restaurant that says, what do they call it, uh, where you?
Open air?
Huh?
Open air dining? No, I highly doubt it.
But, uh,
Let, let me ask you, uh...
It's no danger to anybody.
Yeah, let me, let me just say, so how much is safe, for instance? We were discussing six weeks. Do you believe you'll be able to apply for your grant and receive it in six weeks? 'Cause see, it, it's really not about the six weeks. We, we've been, we've had this building, and it's been in that condition by your own admission twelve to thirteen years. And the biggest indicator of what's gonna happen in the future is what's happened in the past. We'll be here twelve or thirteen years from now waiting on you to apply and get that grant. I've heard that grant story a hundred different ways and a hundred different times. Nobody ever gets it. Nobody ever gets it. And that blight is steady right there in the middle of that area where all of those schoolchildren are...
Okay, so if I approve the outward appearance of the building?
No, the roof.
The roof.
I know I've got to, but I'm saying in the meantime, if I improve the outward appearance of the building...
The roof's been off long enough.
Well, I think, let, let me say this, and then hopefully we'll be able to move on.
Well, it's involved, I, you know, we paid our insurance for sixty years. And the insurance going, it finally settled just last year. I got about a tenth of what they should have paid, 'cause you can't sue insurance companies anymore. Everything goes to arbitration. I mean, it's, it's not like I didn't have, I mean, I want my roof. I paid insurance.
Right.
I mean, it's just...
So, so you have the money to put the roof on?
No, I sort of, they gave me a tenth of what I needed.
So you took the tenth?
After paying premiums for sixty years.
Well, let me, we're gonna have to, I understand, I understand. Uh, thank you all for your time. I, I believe in the interim, I'm gonna ask my colleagues, uh, to grant you six weeks, uh, on this particular item. I hope in the interim that you'll get some communications from individuals interested in this particular building. And I hope, uh, that you will listen carefully to those communications and, uh, and hopefully be persuaded to make a decision one way or the other for the future of this building. If not, it's gonna come back on the agenda in six weeks and, uh, that, and we're gonna be in, Mr. Mr. Davis?
We've been advised, I've been advised, that, uh, there are parties who are interested in purchasing the building from you, and they have been in contact with you over the past several years. Is that correct?
There have been some people that express the interest, but never put a firm offer. And the only one that gave me a verbal offer, offered me a fraction of what it's worth. I mean, just based on that building next door, it would be worth a lot of money. I mean, property values have gone nuts up around there in the last three years.
We know.
Okay.
Right, thank you. So I hope you listen to them. Because if, if you don't have the resources to fix it, and they call you with the offer, then the only alternative we're gonna have in six weeks is to move forward with this action item.
So you get more time?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I just take one second? The item that was passed around and submitted to City Clerk, what you have in front of you is a photograph when the electrical inspector made his inspection a year ago. And on the front attached sheet is his report of what he found and why the electrical system needed to be disconnected or deactivated.
Thank you.
And that's part of the record.
Yes, sir, I appreciate it. Uh, Madam City Clerk? We're gonna close this particular hearing. Anybody else would like to? If not, this hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Kathy O'Keefe. Um, I'm sorry, this, Kathy O'Keefe is, um, coming forth regarding, uh, Shadow Gate Properties.
Yes, now she didn't. Been a long morning.
Yes, it has.
God almighty. I'm Kathy O'Keefe and I live at fifty-seven thirteen Vendome Drive South in District Six. I was relocated from Brad's district because I lived in Shadow Gate during the floods. Would love to have stayed in Midtown if I could have. Um, I've got a little bit of paperwork for you, but I'm gonna make this quick. This is a huge decision that's attached to this issue of rebuilding the floodplain. Uh, way too big of an issue for a quick, let's put a couple of sale things in front of you and let's move along and get people buying those properties. Um, I was one of the, probably the biggest citizen activists at the time. I traveled with the three city commissioners to FEMA. I sat in on the hearings, so talking about knowing what the law was intended to do, they made it perfectly clear that the floodplain was to be cleared and remain cleared till 2033. And in exchange for that, and that's what the Corps of Engineers report was all about, in exchange for that, they would not only buy a significant number of properties, but they would go even further than just that. And they would really help us with recreation planning and data, resources, all kinds of stuff, which we're taking advantage of now. The problem that I have with this is that city entered a contract with the federal government. Now, the city people who are working on this and wanna do this redevelopment of the floodplain are telling us, well, we have a loophole. And the loophole is that some of the properties were bought with FEMA and some of the properties were bought with HUD. So since the HUD money is our money, that gives us a loophole to get out of the commitment we made. And then we can build those properties. Now, the reason the floodplain is cleared as big as it is, is because the federal government learned over the years, you don't take out a, a house, leave a house. Take out a house, leave a house. You gotta clear it significantly enough that it can be managed and something can be done with this. What they wanna do is to sell eighteen pieces of property in Shadow Gate that were cleared with HUD money, the rest of ours and mine included, was cleared with FEMA money. I was the lowest guy in Shadow Gate and the first to go underwater. So I have a very, very big disagreement with the marketing pitch by the city that, well, we're not redeveloping the properties right on the edge of the creek. Didn't matter. They didn't go under first. My street, DeBroka, went under first. I'm a whole block off of, of Levert. So that's a false sort of, um, implication that, uh, we don't have a problem. You know, as long as we leave the edge of the creek fine, but if your pipe goes under the street and comes out in the creek and the water rises, it goes back through the pipe up on your lawn and in your house. And I had five and a half feet of water in my house once, three feet once, two feet once, and about a foot and a half once. So I got flooded four times in three years. And, uh, and organized the, the huge effort to try to get the buyout of the houses and the relocation of the citizens. I'm real familiar with the law on that and I don't think we're in the spirit of the law, maybe not even the letter of the law, by allowing spot building back down in there. There'll be a house and there'll be a lot and there'll be a house. I asked the people who, and believe me, the residents have pretty much given up because what's sort of the leverage for them is, well, we could do a lot worse down there for y'all. If y'all don't agree with this, you could get a whole lot worse than what we're getting. We're even gonna throw you a bone and give you some covenants. And those covenants will allow you to make nice houses down in there, really nice houses, and it'll be just grand again. They know it won't and it's a real problem. We all know in District Six, covenants are very hard to enforce. There is a lot of case law in Mobile that has given areas the ability to enforce their own covenants. So what you're asking for is a, is to allow the floodplain to be redeveloped in this area with such, uh, a fundamentally flawed basic argument, which is, we don't have to live by the accord that we arrived at the city. And guess what? FEMA didn't ask for that contract. We went begging. Jack Edwards begged FEMA to hire the Corps of Engineers to figure out a way to fix our problem. And they worked their rear ends off to create this report in record time so that we could get those properties purchased and clear the floodplain. Here's another thing. The HUD money was used, I said, well, on what premise did you use HUD money? You know? Oh, blight, we use blight. Blight is what that gentleman just had. We were all living in houses that had all been redone because the city told us we had to redo them because they said we didn't have a problem in the floodplain. I wanna stop, but I wanna go on. Here's what I'm begging you to do. Yeah?
I wanna hear what you...
Oh, man, have I got stuff to tell you. I know. Can somebody else give me some of their time?
Nope, nobody else has any.
Y'all are gonna delay it a week, I know you are, but I'm here to tell you, don't take this lightly.
Yes, ma'am.
Because this is serious stuff.
Yes, ma'am.
And I've also gotta tell you that I...
Oh, you're borrowing against that time? Okay.
That's right. Sorry about it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Mitchell Harder.
I hope this is also the same topic?
Same topic.
Good. Okay.
The remaining, um, speakers are on the...
How many speakers do we have?
Um, after Mr. Harder, we have two other speakers.
Come on. Oh, yeah, come on. If, if you all could make a concerted effort not to necessarily repeat what the other speaker just said, thank you, that'd be greatly appreciated. Yes, sir? If you get your name and address, please.
My name's Mitchell Harder. I reside at twenty-two hundred North Levert, uh, District One. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to express my, uh, opinion on the Shadow Gate redevelopment. Um, I'm gonna take a little bit different angle. Um, when I bought my house in nineteen ninety, um, one of my big concerns was what was gonna happen with the green space. Uh, I reached out to the city, uh, to find out what their intentions were and I received a letter from the city indicating that they would, um, they intended to keep the area a green space. Uh, several, several of my neighbors I've talked to have said the same thing. When they were investing in the neighborhood, that was one of the concerns.
Do you have a copy of this letter?
Yes, yes, sir. Um, I've got several copies if you'd like some more.
Yeah.
We'll pass one down. It won't take long for us to read it.
And a lot of my neighbors tell me similar stories. When they were looking at buying the property in the neighborhood, one of their questions is what was gonna happen with the green space? And in a variety of ways, we've all received assurances that the city intended to maintain it a green space. So I'm, I'm opposed to releasing these properties. Um, you know, basically I would like to hold the city to what they said they were gonna do. Uh, I don't have a lot more to say about that, uh, so...
Thanks for the letter.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you being patient.
Thank you.
And your time.
Karen Webb.
I didn't say anything. Hi, my name is Karen Webb and I reside in Shadow Gate Place at twenty-two oh one Levert Drive. Uh, my family moved here from Pennsylvania in twenty-fourteen for my husband's job at Avonik. Um, and the home we purchased, uh, at twenty-two one oh Levert is adjacent to Lot one fifteen in the city-owned open space between Levert Drive and DeBroka Streets. So before the city council, there are two resolutions defined that lots one hundred, one hundred and six, one hundred and seven, and one hundred and eight are not now needed for public or municipal purposes. Please do not approve these resolutions. These lots, along with the rest of the open space, are in fact still needed for public purposes. The open space is used by the community for recreation. Out my windows, I often see dog owners exercising their dogs, fathers and sons hitting golf balls, frisbee golf players and folks just out for a stroll. The open space benefits the community as a nature preserve. I'm constantly astounded at the variety of birds I see, uh, turtles, frogs, butterflies. The open space contributes to the general tranquility that is rare this close to downtown Mobile. But the open space also benefits the community as natural flood protection. As you are aware, the, the space came into the city's possession because of flooding. Mobile normally receives five and a half feet of rain a year and it has to go somewhere in a very short amount of time. Houston's Hurricane Harvey is a recent reminder of the terrible consequences of too much rain, which we can't control, combined with overdevelopment in flood-prone areas, which we can control. All of the open space in question is several feet below the base flood elevation and prone to retaining standing water for days after significant rain events. Enormous amounts of fill will have to be brought in to raise these properties up, which will leave existing homes such as mine well below base flood elevation in a very low spot. Would it not be in the best interest of the public to leave well enough alone and retain some undeveloped space as flood protection? As much as I enjoy the recreational opportunities and natural beauty of the open space, for me, the issue is more serious. I have grave concerns that my property will flood if the city of Mobile permits redevelopment in this open space. If these resolutions for, for sale are just the first of many, I know that portions of my home are gonna end up underwater. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
If I could comment? Oh, I'm sorry. If, I don't have a question.
Go ahead.
Mr. Davis?
The, the letter we've been provided was addressed to Mr. Jeff Newman on West Mount Island Drive and it appeared at that ti, it appears at that time, Mr. Newman owned some property at twenty-two hundred North Levert.
Yes, sir. That was the person I bought the house from. As part of my negotiation for him selling the house to me, I, I requested him to, uh, get this documentation. He said he would, he had some connections with the city.
He was a real estate...
Okay, that explains it. Thank you very much.
I, I, I don't have a question, but I, I wanna thank everyone for coming down and addressing this matter. Um, I know that, um, you have two new residents there, a, as far as not living through the flood, but one, um, Ms. O'Keefe, Mrs. O'Keefe. And I know she's a walking encyclopedia and probably could go on at length. There is a document that the Corps of Engineer, which she referenced, talked about what the agreement would be on the land. And I think it's very important that the city, um, stay focused on that and not allow building of any kind at this point. I think the agreements are through twenty thirty-three, if I'm not mistaken, which would be a fifty-year run on the agreement so that the city, I guess, could study the area or make the improvements that they talked about to the, to the creek system and then go from there. But we're certainly not at that date certain. It is in the documents and, um, as far as having HUD access to property, um, the premise of how that land was acquired was the flooding incident. Uh, it doesn't matter what, um, resources were cobbled together to remove those structures, it still was the one or, or multiple incidents of flooding that got worse each time and therefore the desire to move people out of harm's way. And I don't think it's time to put anyone else in harm's way by allowing a build, even with new standards on placement of how tall the building can be.
That's right.
It still has roofs, it has, um, hardened surfaces for driveways, circular drives, entry points, and the flow would, would change. And, um, so far, there hasn't been an incident back there. We've had some rain occurrences, um, so let's not upset that apple cart. And I know we're gonna hold this over a week, but I do hope the final disposition is that we not allow this property to leave the public trust.
No. Mr. Chairman? We have one more speaker. We still have one more speaker. Okay. Let's, let's hear the speaker, then we have all this commentary. But we wanna hear from the, they waited so patiently.
Yes, they...
And we definitely wanna hear from, yes, ma'am?
Courtney Murphy.
She's been with us since this morning. Yes.
Hi, my name's Courtney Murphy. I'm three oh eight Levert Street. Um, we are adjacent to the three lots that are on the agenda today. So a lot of what my concerns have already been said. Um, the main thing is, I don't want my house to flood. I don't want my house to flood. We already buy flood insurance. It's very expensive. The coverage is less than ideal and I just, I worry about changing the topography of the field next to me, um, with removal of trees and grading of land. And this is our biggest advancement. My husband's here, like, this is our, this is what we spend our money on. So I just ask that this decision be vetted out more because I, I feel like it was definitely sprung on us. We were blindsided. I've had friends that wanted to move in our neighborhood for years and I always told them, I'm sorry, but the land's not for sale. So for this to come out in March, the way it did with just signs in the yard, was painful as a Mobile resident. I've lived here for sixteen years. I've always lived in three six six oh seven and, um, originally from Fairhope. I love Mobile. I defend Mobile. And yet, as a taxpaying citizen, we were blindsided by this after told countless times that this wouldn't be sold. So I have a problem with the process and the transparency and the communication. I have a problem with, um, the definition of no longer needed for public use. I mean, as my neighbor said, like, we are using it. We're not using it with houses on it, but we're using it. And, um, I just hope that there's some type of middle ground. Um, I, I get that the city's trying to unload properties. I just, it's in our neighborhood, it's adjacent to my house, and I don't wanna be part of a, a flood. So, um, I think that was really all I had, other than we have had a very generous, um, generous with his time attorney in our neighborhood who has reacted to this with covenants. It was hastily put together. He's a very smart guy. We're very appreciative. But I don't want our recent covenants to appear as we're compliant and excited and, you know, accepting of new houses in the neighborhood. This was done to protect what we had left in a very little amount of time. And so I think it's been misconstrued that, you know, we put our covenants together when we're ready for new people. We don't want the field developed. And, um, I think that's it. I think that's it. But thank y'all for your time. Thank you, Councilman Richardson, for listening to us time and time again. And I just hope that more research will be done before anything's final.
Could I ask, is there a, is there a homeowners association? No? Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Rich?
I would just like to thank all of the citizens from Shadow Gate for hanging in here. This has been a long stretch. Normally, we, we would've long been out of here. It just shows us the level of your interest in the, in, in your neighborhoods and we, we respect that. Um, I support you all one hundred percent. I lived, I moved in Shadow Gate in nineteen seventy-five and I had three floods. And the only reason I'm not in Shadow Gate now is because of the floods. Yes, I would, I was intending to stay in Shadow Gate. So, uh, um, we, we're not gonna vote on this today. Uh, we, we will be deciding, but, uh, I mentioned this this morning, uh, it's hard to ignore, uh, the second paragraph in this letter stating that this land would be left a passive for recreational purpose, that no building would be put up here. Uh, it's hard to ignore that. And, uh, we have had no difficulties with, with the land left in that state. The only fear we, we have had is when someone was trying to, when they're trying to sell the land and build something over there. So, uh, I, the city's gonna have to show me why we can't honor this. They're gonna have to show me why, why in the world we can't honor this. That's, I see, this is, is the way the land ought to be left. But, uh, we'll be voting on this next week and I will be on your side.
All right. And I believe the majority of this council will too, uh, 'cause I, I see exactly where y'all are coming from. I know what Mr. Roberts is trying to do and hopefully there'll be other areas where he'll be able to do it. Um, let's see. Madam City Clerk? Madam City Clerk?
CIP resolution's held, being held over. 21735, authorize extension to the contract with Skolski Consulting for Parks and Recreation, ADA Consulting Services to extend the contract until September 30th, 2020.
Second.
Probably moved to second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
Resolutions held over. 09736, reallocate monies from Concessions Street, covert replacement, and McNally spoil removal. 21737, authorize contract of H.O. Weaver &amp; Sons for 2018 Pago Group B. 4738, approved offering for 18 Donald Street for sale.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved to second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Ordinances being introduced-
Wait, 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 I didn't hear, but all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Ordinances being introduced for the first time, 87030 through 88032.
By council rules, these ordinance would layover for one week.
Consent resolutions being introduced for the first time, 03741 through 03769.
Motion to suspend the rules for meeting consideration of resolution 03741 through 03769.
Second.
Probably motion to second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll take all these together with the exception of 4748. 03741, 742, and 743 are appointing and reappointing Mark Spivey to the Mobile Downtown Redevelopment Authority, Richard Davis to the Lab People's Memorial Stadium Park and Recreation Board, and John Browning to the Mobile Library Board.
Madam Clerk, I also want 46749 read separately.
08744, approved requisitions over 7,500 for the week of August 12th. 37745, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license for Holiday Inn on Spring Hill Memorial Drive South. 40746, 747, 747 are declaring the structures at 1562 Main Street and 1364 St. Meter Street, public notices and ordering them demolished. 6750, approve award of special bonus to Officer of the Month as part of the Mayor's Incentive Program. 6751, determine expenditure to shackle-free marketing for the 9th Annual Port City Battle of the Bands, serves a public purpose and approved payment. 03752, reappoint Scott Graham to the Human Relations Commission. 03768, reappoint Reggie Copeland to the Lab People's Memorial Stadium Public Park and Recreation Board. 03769, appoint Byron Carter to the Mobile City-County Youth Council.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved to second. Any discussion? Just want to thank Mr. Richard Davis for his continued service on the Lab People's Stadium Board. You're doing an outstanding job. Thank you for agreeing to serve another term. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
4748, declare the structure at 600 St. Anthony Street, a public nuisance and order it demolished.
Move delay over six weeks.
Second.
Probably moved to second. Any discussion? I want to state for the record, this building is getting a six-week life extension. If something doesn't transpire positively in the next six weeks, it needs to meet the wrecking ball. Those kids deserve better, their community deserves better. We don't have 12 years to wait on a grant, a grant. We don't know where the grant's coming from, and neither does the property owner. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item is held over for six weeks.
46749, name the walking trail in Figures Park as the Florita Fortune Walking Trail.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved to second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Richardson.
Mr. Chairman, you see this group up here? This is the family of Mrs. Florita Fortune. Her daughter's up there, and they're here to witness this council naming the walking trail after their mother. And I would like to invite all of our citizens on this coming Saturday at 1:00 to meet us at the Figures Park. We're going to build a new interway to the park, and we're going to, when you walk under the interway, it's going to have an arch that says Florita Fortune Walking Trail. Then we have, will have two columns on the side. One on this side going to have a picture. One on this side going to have her epitaph, her life record, over on this side as you go into the park. So we want all of our citizens, Fortune dedicated about 55 years to the Recreation Department, and we had to, we took a while to do this because we didn't want to go in hatred. We want to, we want to put something up that was lasting, that would represent her legacy. I think we have found it, and we're going to unveil it Saturday at 1:00. Meet us at the park this coming Saturday.
All right. Wonderful. And we appreciate, we appreciate all of y'all's patience for staying with us. This certainly is, I agree with your councilperson 100%, this is certainly well-deserved. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
CIP resolutions being introduced for the first time, 21753 through 21756.
Motion to suspend the rules for meeting consideration of resolution 21753 through 21756.
It's been properly motioned, it's been properly motioned and second. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Here no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item's passed.
21753, authorized contract with Neil Schaefer for 2018. CIP Trinity Gardens Area Street and Drainage Improvements. 21754, authorized contract of T.S. Wall &amp; Sons for Stotts Park Recreation Center Flooring Replacement. 21755, authorized contract with McElhenney Construction Company for 2018. CIP Trinity Gardens Area Street and Drainage Improvements. 21756, authorized contract with Thompson Engineering for 2019 Drainage Group F.
So move.
Second.
Probably move to second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item's passed.
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, 01757 through 37766.
Motion to suspend the rules for meeting consideration of resolution 21762 and 31764, and the rest of the resolution would layover for one week by council rules.
Second.
Probably moved to second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item's passed.
21762, authorized contract with the Nature Conservancy, Conservancy, for the NFWF, Mobile Bayshore Habitat Conservation Acquisition Initiative Phase Two. 31764, authorized grant application to ALDOT for Tiger Phase Three Project Atrix.
So move.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye. Call for public hearings, 41767, call for public hearing to rezone property located at 5221 Cottage Hill Road, south side of Cottage Hill Road, 335 feet west of Demetropolis Road, from R1 to B2, scheduled September 17th.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved to second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is called.
Announcements.
Oh, man. Mr. Richardson.
No, I've talked to him now.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I do, I do, I do have an announcement. I do have an announcement having to do with the fiscal year 2020 budget. I was advised, the council had spoken some at the pre-council meeting about a timeline, and I was advised during the course of our meeting today by, by the council attorney that we're going to have to slightly change that. We had, I had originally thought that since the budget was being delivered to the City Council today, we could go ahead and set the public hearing. However, the, the law requires-
Just email us if you don't mind.
The law, I want to say it, I want to tell everybody. The law requires that the council cannot set the date for the public hearing until the mayor delivers his budget message to the council at a meeting. So, so next week, on August 27th, the mayor will deliver his budget message to the, well, first of all, the budget will be delivered to the council today. Next week, on August 27th, the mayor will deliver his budget message to the council, at which time, the council will set September 3rd at 10:30 a.m. for the public hearing. That afternoon, the Finance Committee will meet, at which council members can ask questions about the budget, but there will be no public comment taken that afternoon. We will have the public hearing on the budget at September, on September 3rd, at this meeting at 10:30 in the morning. Anyone who wants to talk about the budget can come down and talk to the council and the public at that time about it. On September 10th, the Finance Committee will meet again for further discussion and questions. Again, no public comment will be taken. And on September 17th, the council proposes to act on the budget. Thank you.
Mrs. Rich?
Just real quick, I'm going to announce again, the Public Services Committee meeting to address the towing ordinance, and that will be September 10th, which is a Tuesday at 2:00 on the 94 in Government Plaza. Thank you.
Mrs. Gregory?
Thank you. Just want to thank everyone who came out for our Demo Day event last Thursday at the fire station on Museum Drive. It's Fire Station 18. We had a, it wasn't Thursday, it was Tuesday, I'm ahead of myself, but we had a good, a really great event. The firefighters, I think, had a good time taking the sledgehammer to the old building. It is currently undergoing demolition now. It's kind of a slower process than we might have thought, but it is coming down. Also, I'll be putting out more information about this, but we are putting together an implementation and phasing plan for Langen Park, which will include all of the work that will be done through the 12-Mile Creek Project, which is funded through the BP sources. So we'll be looking for some volunteers to be on focus groups, as well as a steering committee. And again, I'll be putting out more information about this as the date gets closer, but they will be in September or October in that timeframe, and we'll just be looking for a lot of great participation and ideas from the public. And that's it.
Mr. Small?
I'll stay with them next week.
Mr. Williams?
I'll just say, welcome to the new director, Jim Delap. You've started a trend that these are the kind of meetings we have, we're going to talk.
You know what? That is all his fault. It's all his fault. That's right.
But Jim, I appreciate you not walking out on us.
No, it didn't. We appreciate it. I join my colleague in welcoming Colonel aboard, and I look forward to working with you. A lot of important issues in District Two, and I look forward to solving a lot of that, working together with you. I think all the citizens who come out to our last five community meetings will have some more toward the winter, and as always, you can reach me at 509-4239, or by any other way that you normally would reach me. Do I hear a motion? Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.